So Jeff, do you still have to shave it?
Oh, yeah.
Here.
Oh, yeah.
So I always laugh at HR because Tare and I used to rib him so bad because he'd have like these little patches that he'd miss.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners meeting on February the 11th at 2025. I gotta tell you, I love seeing new faces out there in that audience. And sometimes we get the repeats all the time. So it's good to see new faces. Thank you for being here. Thank you for taking your afternoon to be part of your community and listen to what's going on. At this time, we're gonna ask Pastor Renaud to come forward and lead us in our invocation. If you'll please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for your mercy and grace. And Lord, as we come before you today, Father, we just ask your blessing over our community leaders as they meet with members of our community. Father, you would give your blessing of wisdom. Father, your word says that we lean not on our own understanding, but acknowledge you in all of our ways. And so as we come today, would we do that? In your heavenly name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Captain Zalakik, could you please come forward? Could you lead us in our pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please do the roll call.
Thank you. This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. This 11th day of February 2025. In attendance are Chair Rebecca Bays, First Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Second Vice Chair Jana Barrick, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Holly Davis, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise Diamond-Lynn.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Howard, can you please tell us if there's additions or deletions?
Yes, we have a few items. We have an addition, proclamation, United celebrates 2-1-1 Day in Citrus County. Also, E2, we're gonna pool utilities budget transfer. G1, correction, recommended action for the confirmation of County Engineer Kincheek, which is Water Resources Director as a county engineer. H4, the 1:48 PM public hearing, Northwest Quadrant Water Main Assessment Citizen Correspondence was added. So you have that. K1, rescinding PACE, Ryan Barkus, Director, Florida Development Finance Corps Correspondence was added. M1, reducing building permit fees and waiving deposits for subject to sewer projects, Citrus County Building Alliance Correspondence. And we're also gonna pool E11. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board, looking for a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm not sure I understood E2. That was a deletion of one aspect of it? Or E2 altogether?
My understanding, just, just one, right, just one item.
Deleting all of E2? Just one item?
Just, just one item, the utilities only.
All right, see if I can get this straight. Motion to approve the agenda with addition of C3, deletion of one item, subitem of E2, correction on G1, and additional backup for H4, K1, and E11.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any further board comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. I have to back up for a minute. I was very remiss, if you don't mind, this past week. Former State Representative Masulo's wife, Patty, passed away. And if we could all just take a moment and bow our heads and in silence pray for Representative Masulo's family, that God will lead them through this time of sour. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the consent.
Motion to approve a consent agenda in its entirety?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Next on our agenda is proclamations and presentations, or to be followed by presentations.
Motion to approve C1 through 3.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Barrick. Is there any board discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm not gonna support this motion. I'd like to take these, these proclamations one at a time, because I can support a couple of them. I'm not gonna support C1, and I'll give my reasons when we get to it, if this board is willing to take them one at a time.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
To help clear the room and save time for folks, may we take them out of order?
We sure can.
Motion to approve C2?
Second.
I'm, I'm sorry to butt in.
Oh, we got a motion and a second on the floor.
Commissioner Finnegan, would you like to rescind your motion?
No.
Commissioner Barrick, would you like to rescind your motion?
Yes.
So that motion dies for a lack of a second?
Okay.
Motion to approve C2?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis for proclamation C2, seconded by Commissioner Kennard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Motion to approve C3?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Kennard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve C1, unless you wanna go ahead and do the proclamations for the other two?
Let's go ahead and do those proclamations, because I think we're gonna...
Would those present, representing Black History Month, please come forward? Whereas February is officially recognized as Black History Month, a time dedicated to honoring and celebrating the contributions, achievements, and cultural heritage of African-Americans throughout the history of the United States. And whereas Black History Month provides an occasion to reflect upon the enduring legacy and profound contributions of African-Americans in shaping not only the history of our nation, but also the history of Citrus County. And whereas it is both fitting and appropriate to recognize, honor, and celebrate the achievements and lasting impact of African-Americans in Citrus County, acknowledging their significant role in the development and success of our local history and community. Now therefore, the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of February 2025 as Black History Month in Citrus County, and urge all residents to reflect upon the rich history, extraordinary achievements, and enduring contributions of African-Americans, to celebrate their legacy, and to continue striving toward a future of unity, progress, and shared prosperity for all, for all, executed this 11th day of February 2025.
It feels a little different being on this side. First of all, thank the Commissioner for recognition of Black History Month. It was most appreciative on behalf of the African-American Club of Citrus County and the African-American Reading Committee. We sure appreciate you guys for this proclamation. I told myself I was gonna wear a pink suit when I got in here, but the pink suit didn't make it out the closet. But I just wanna thank you guys so much, because there's so much contributions from people of color from Citrus County and the country. So this is awesome recognition for that. We thank you in advance, and we continue to pray your strength in each and everything that you say and do. Also, as an additional, Dr. BJ, I just call her BJ, but she's Dr. BJ, has a speaking engagement tomorrow at Regent Lakes Library at 10 o'clock. Closing up? All right. Hey, look, I've been out for a little bit. So she's, she'll be speaking at 10 o'clock tomorrow, so I encourage you guys to come out and listen to that. And lastly, we celebrate at the end of this month for the African-American Reading, which will be held at Curtis Peterson Auditorium on February 23rd at 2:30. So hopefully you'll schedule, you're allowed to, to come and celebrate the literature and the music. We have a good, we're gonna have fun. So come on out, it's free. So we can leave everything on, it's free at 2:30. So thank you for this time. It is different to be on this side than to be on the other side, but I appreciate each and every one of you and all that you continue to do. Thank you. We love you.
Would those in attendance, representing recognizing February 11th, 2025, as 2-1-1 Day, please come forward? Whereas 2-1-1 is a vital service that connects individuals and families to essential community resources, including housing, food assistance, mental health services, disaster relief, and more. And whereas 2-1-1 is available 24/7, 365 days a year, providing confidential and free assistance to millions of people across the United States and Canada who are in need of help. And whereas highly trained 2-1-1 specialists offer critical support to individuals facing personal crises, financial hardships, and emergencies, ensuring they receive the resources necessary to improve their well-being and stability. And whereas the 2-1-1 network plays a key role in disaster response and recovery efforts, working alongside local, state, and national organizations to provide real-time information and assistance during emergencies. And whereas 2-1-1 helps strengthen communities by connecting people to essential services, reducing barriers to support, and promoting collaboration among nonprofits, government agencies, and businesses. Now therefore, the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners do hereby and proclaim February 11th, 2025, and encourage all residents to recognize and support the critical work of 2-1-1 in strengthening our community, executed this 11th day of February 2025.
Well, thank you for this. Let this be evidence that the wheels of government can turn very quickly sometimes. It was just last night at an event that I mentioned that February 11th is 2-1-1 Day, and Commissioner Davis was in attendance and said, let's get together a proclamation. And so thank you to staff who contacted me today, just prior to 11:00 a.m. And, you know, I always say that every day at United Way is different. You never know what's gonna happen. So happy to be here. And, you know, 2-1-1 is just one initiative that we have at United Way out of many, and it's one that's very, very important. So in our community and communities around the nation, as we heard Mr. PIO over there tell us, that across the country, when people have a need and they don't know where to turn, they don't know what number to call to get that need met, they can call 2-1-1. And a qualified representative is on the other end, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, to direct them where they need to go. And so our United Way provides that service here in this community, and we wanna thank the Citrus County Charitable, Community Charitable Foundation, get that right, the C-C-C-F, for, yep, 4CF, for some, some financial resources this year to help us make that happen. So we're very grateful to them. So I just wanna tell you really quickly, I went and looked at our dashboard, since January 1st this year, 570 calls to 2-1-1 in Citrus County. The number one request was for housing and shelter, so 219 calls for that. Second was employment and income. Third was utilities. Fourth was healthcare. And fifth was help with food. So those, so it's good, right, for us to even see what are some of the issues that people are calling about. So 2-1-1's a vital service. We're happy to play a role in it at United Way, and we're very grateful for this proclamation today. Thank you for helping us shed some light on it. Appreciate it.
So we're back to C1. Commissioner Kennard?
Yes. I will go ahead and take the unenviable lead on suggesting why I'm not gonna support C1, and I hope that this board does not. And we look at some, some alternatives. This initially, the idea of this was floated. It sounded fun. It sounded interesting. And then I started having some second thoughts about it. This grew out of a boat ramp initiative that, that this board has supported, and we've, we've given to the legislature to ask them for millions of dollars. I believe the ask is at $10 million now to the state legislature. We knew it was a big ask, and we know that currently with the state legislature, we're told that they're gonna be looking at funding regional projects. Projects that have regional significance, projects that have economic development significance. So I felt like this was one that as a board, we needed to get behind and see how much support we could get for it. I reached out to the Marion County Board of County Commissioners, each and every single one of them individually, and asked them if they would consider supporting this initiative. Even though it's a Citrus County initiative, if they would write us a letter supporting this, this boat ramp on the Barge Canal and help us to make this happen. And Marion County agreed to. And unanimously, their county commission agreed to support the boat ramp on the Barge Canal. I did the same thing with the Hernando County Commissioners, reached out to each, each one of them individually, and asked them if their board would consider supporting this project, and laid out the reasons why I felt like it was of regional significance. And ultimately, their Board of County Commissioners supported it unanimously as well. Both of those counties sent us, sent the county letters supporting this project, so that those letters could be presented to the legislature in hopes to get the funding for this long discussed and much needed project in our community. I started having second thoughts about this, not the idea of it, but the timing of it. We've all heard, we've all heard about putting the cart before the horse, and I'm gonna lay out why I think that's exactly what has happened here. I just told you what, what I've gone through, and Mr. Toy has, has been working the phone lines, has been working emails, trying to get support for the Barge Canal Boat Ramp, leading up to ultimately Commissioner, or not Commissioner, Representative Groh and Senator Angola hopefully getting these things through the state legislature. We never once mentioned to either one of those counties, any of those commissioners, that we were considering renaming the Barge Canal as well. I don't know if that would have made a difference in their decision, but it certainly, I'm sure, would have gotten them some feedback from some of their constituents, good or bad. Maybe it would have been minimal, maybe it would have been nothing at all. But I don't feel like it was appropriate for us to ask for those letters first, and then decide at a later date to go back and, and add more to this. Then started thinking about the Marjorie Harris Carr family. Marjorie Harris Carr, for the people who are unaware, she was an environmental powerhouse that took on the federal government to stop the Barge Canal from going across the state of Florida. Marjorie Harris and the people who worked with her to stop this project ultimately formed the Florida Defenders of the Environment. They worked on projects, environmental projects, from the Panhandle to South Florida. We have not checked with the Marjorie Harris Carr family to see if they would agree to this. Maybe they would, maybe they wouldn't. The Greenway, the sides of the Barge Canal are named in her honor, not necessarily the canal itself, but it's still, given, given the, the powerful effort on her behalf to challenge the federal government to stop this canal, it would have been appropriate to go to that family and say, we have an idea. We've got an idea about renaming the canal. We want to honor our veterans. We want to honor Marjorie Harris's, Marjorie Harris Carr's legacy. What do you think about us doing this together cooperatively as a group? The Florida Defenders of the Environment, they also have a big role to play here. They should have been, they should have been contacted and brought on board. We should have been building a coalition of people ready to rename this canal and got ideas from them as well. The Florida Greenway and Trails, they are heavily invested along the Barge Canal. They've, they've built infrastructure there. They've invested money there. We have not contacted them about this either. The, of course, Dixie and Robin Hollins. We don't have, we didn't reach out to them to find out where they're at on this. Maybe they would support it, maybe they wouldn't support it. We don't know. But again, Dixie and Robin have thousands, I believe it's thousands of acres up there. We don't, we don't know what their position is on it. Again, maybe they would support it, maybe not, but it would be good to have them, it would be good to have them on board, and these are discussions that should be had before we jump out there and just rename something, which quite frankly, we don't know that we have the authority to rename it to start with, but maybe if we've got a coalition of people together and groups together, then we can go to the legislature and say, this is what we would like to do. This is a list of people that are behind it and wanna make this happen. The U.S. Coast Guard, pretty significant, right? They're building a brand-new cutter station. It's gonna be right next door to where our new boat ramp is at. Has anybody reached out to the Coast Guard to see if they support it? There's millions and millions of dollars they're investing in this new, this new Coast Guard cutter station. We're absolutely ecstatic to see them moving from the Waukoochi River out to the Barge Canal. It really would have been appropriate to reach out to the U.S. Coast Guard and say, here's what we wanna do. We're building a coalition. Will you guys get on board with us? Again, we wanna do something that's going to honor our veterans. We wanna do something that's gonna really stand out and make this something we're all excited about. We didn't contact them. That is putting the cart before the horse. The DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, the state of Florida, they are giving us the property for this, or leasing it to us for a dollar a year to build a $20 million boat ramp on. The DEP has a strip of land that runs, extends the length of the Barge Canal out to the Duke Energy Facility, where they have been storing the old Barge Canal Bridge, since that was, that was taken down and replaced with the one that's currently there. DEP has allowed us to store all of that material on the banks of the Barge Canal, which eventually we're going to build, eventually sooner rather than later, we're gonna build a great offshore reef with it. We've extended the, expanded the acreage out there. We're working with groups to get that material moved off of DEP's property and get it out there and build a beautiful artificial reef offshore. We didn't contact DEP to see what their thoughts were. Their property runs right along Hollins Ranch, right down to the water in the, in the, in the Barge Canal. Again, maybe they would support it, maybe they wouldn't, but we didn't contact them first to even ask. Those are conversations that should be had before we go, we're renaming this, and all of a sudden, we've got all these groups going, what about a phone call? Why didn't, why didn't you give us a jingle? Marion County, maybe it would have been appropriate to call their county administrator and go, does this change your support for our $20 million project if we rename this canal? We don't know if it does, because we didn't make that call. Hernando County, Levy County's a mile up the road, two miles up the road. Did we call their county administrator and say, hey, we're thinking about doing this. We know you don't support the Barge Canal Boat Ramp Project, but we, we're thinking about renaming the, the Barge Canal itself. Would you support it? We don't know. The answer is we don't know, because we didn't call them. We didn't call them. We didn't email them. Those are things that should be taking place. You've got three counties. You've got several state and federal agencies that should have been contacted, an environmental warriors family that absolutely should have been contacted. There are just, there are too many things that were missed to jump out and say, we're gonna rename this. this." Now, I am all onboard if there was an agenda item today that said, "Look, we're going to do something really big up on the Barge Canal. We want to do something to honor our veterans. Let's talk about some ideas." Maybe renaming the Barge Canal is one idea. Maybe building a fishing pier along with this new ramp and calling it the Veterans Something or Other Fishing Pier. I'd be onboard with that. We can find the money to do that. That would be something cool. What about an elevated platform at our 10-slip launch with 300 new parking spots? How about an elevated platform there that is named in honor of our military veterans that we all greatly have a tremendous amount of respect for? An elevated platform that folks could go to and watch the sunset out on the Gulf of America? How cool would that be? You know, we could do something like that. What about, "We're going to have a $20 million boat ramp. It will be the largest, the nicest boat ramp facility, probably from here to Pinellas County, possibly further south." I know there's nothing like that north of here. What about naming that brand-new facility, that great facility, in honor of our veterans? There's a lot of things that we could do, and I'm not being critical of this, I'm being critical of the order that it's being handled. So for that reason, I'm not going to support it. I hope that this board doesn't support it. I would much rather see us pull this and have an open discussion about what we want to do with this project that's going to go there. Let's get everybody together and make sure we can get that funding out of the legislature, and then we're going to have to work together to come up with the remaining $10 million or $11 million, whatever it is, to build this fantastic piece of infrastructure.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Finnegan.
Well, Commissioner Kennard, I respectfully disagree with you. I honestly think that you cannot be more off-base. I see you've pandered to a very small crowd, and the first text I got, and I was shocked that there would be an issue, was that probably the most un-American person that I know that likes to blog about things, that's where I feel like that comes from. Trying to make something political when I don't think any political party has a problem with the words "American Freedom" and dedicating something to our veterans. Now, you made a very, very long argument of all the people we didn't call, but we're not changing a name today. We're having a proclamation saying, "The five of us is open to honoring our veterans and changing this name to the American Freedom Canal." We're not putting the cart before the horse. Making all those calls would be putting the cart before the horse. This is what we're supposed to do. Hey, we all think that's a great idea. We're going to make this proclamation and then start taking the next steps. How can we take the next steps before the five of us make a decision on the direction we want to go? Today, we're going to honor our veterans, I hope. I hope you change your mind, and then once we all say yes in this pass and we give them the honor today, then we'll all help you make those calls. I cannot imagine any one of those groups being offended. During that argument, it makes me wonder where I am. This is still America, right? This would be controversial if we were sitting in Russia trying to, "Oh my God, American Freedom, that might not sit well with our citizens." Which citizens is this not supposed to sit well with? And everywhere, we've put the Barge Canal. That is not the name of that canal. In essence, by putting it everywhere as the Barge Canal, we've changed the name. It is the Cross Florida Barge Canal, and it does not cross Florida. And we're not taking anything away from that family. We'll continue to honor. If anything, the lady that did all of this great work is because she had American Freedom. I think this further highlights the family, honors our vets. It's the very first step so we can make those calls and reach out to people. This is what the Board of County Commissioners wants, and we decided to do. Partner with us, please.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
First of all, I will tell you that I'm offended that you would consider that pandering for me to get up here and speak my piece. I tried to have this agenda item pulled before the agenda was ever published. So I don't know to whom you're referencing, but when you want to talk about pandering, and I was not going to go here until you did, this idea was sold to me probably two or three weeks ago, not to honor our veterans. I'm sorry to say that publicly, but the idea was not, had nothing to do with veterans. It was, "If we do this, we might be able to stay under the radar at the state level and get funding for our boat ramp, and we can take it to the feds, and maybe because of the Gulf of America, we can rename this and get funding for our boat ramp." Never were veterans mentioned to me, not once, until last Tuesday morning, I reached out to the county administrator and I said, "I think this is wrong. We're putting the cart before the horse. We haven't talked to any of these organizations about doing this, and we've already got two counties who have gone on record, sent us letters of support, and we didn't even give them the courtesy of calling them and saying, 'This is what we want to do.'" What I was told at that time was, "All right, we've got until 4 o'clock today to pull it. We'll go ahead and pull it." And I said, "That's great news. I'm not opposed to it. We can have this discussion, but I think we're ahead of ourselves right now." I got a call later in the day and said, "We can't pull it. You've got some commissioners that want to see it on there," and one commissioner said she's reached out to all the veterans groups and invited them to come here that day. That was the very first time I heard anything about veterans with this. So let's not say that renaming this is to honor our veterans. The renaming of it, the idea behind it, was for funding at the state and federal level. I was hoping we wouldn't go there. Unfortunately, you did. The way that this should have been handled is if the Board of County Commissioners wants to go down this road, then we have a discussion about it. We don't put it on the agenda as a proclamation. Proclamation is saying, "We've decided right now, this is what we're going to call this day. We're going to call this Day 211 Day, or we're going to honor Black History Month, or Veterans Appreciation Week, or those types of things." And when we're deciding to do something like this, we put it on the agenda to have a discussion about it first, and then if we want to do a proclamation or actually take action on it, that would be the appropriate way to handle it, not like this.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Finnegan.
Commissioner Kennard, I apologize for offending you. That would never be something that I would want to do publicly or privately. I do stand by my arguments of this being the first step, and I will have to say, the first time I heard about it with this name, veterans were mentioned to me. And then very, very shortly after that, I was the commissioner because I sit on two veterans' boards. This is something to honor veterans. If you could reach out, and long before I knew anybody was thinking about pulling it, it was all a very good idea. Why would I ever think that there would be a problem with American Freedom? So I don't want anyone to think that that was done politically or to stop something. I had no idea. It was brought to me, some of the reasons that you said, sure, but it was always veterans, and it could only have been a few days later, I don't remember the timeline, saying, "You sit on these veterans' boards, they may want to come and be honored." And I said, "That sounds great. Why wouldn't that be great?" And then everything exploded after that, and I still think that this is just the wrong thing to be upset about. It's, I feel like as a board, it's almost embarrassing. We are patriotic Americans that ran for office, and though we disagree on some things, I can't ever imagine anybody disagreeing on this.
Madam Chair.
One more.
You go ahead.
One more bite at the apple, and then I promise I'll shut up. This isn't something that I'm opposed to. It's not something that I'm at all embarrassed about. I said to start with, I was taking the unenviable position of leading the motion to try and deny this at this point. It is the timing, it's the way that it's been handled. It is much better for us to be up here and have a discussion, involve these other groups, build a coalition that will gain some energy. The idea, again, as I laid out to you the timeline, the idea of changing the name was for funding, funding from the state and funding from the feds. If that's the goal, then let's figure out a way that we can best access those funds, and then we can also figure out a way that we're going to honor our veterans. I'm all about it. I'll help you find the funding for it. But it's the way that this has been handled, this is an inappropriate way to handle this.
Commissioner Davis.
I concur with everything that Commissioner Kennard said. The process has been not right. Proclamations, I haven't been up here nearly as long as my colleague at the other end, but we've never had, in my memory, a contentious proclamation, ever. This is softball, guys. This is supposed to be feel-good, make everyone feel good, lots of clapping and photos and all that other good stuff. And Commissioner Finnegan, to your point, if the staff was told by one or more commissioners that it had to go on the agenda, you're not looking for a 5-0. And proclamation should always be a 5-0. They should be easy. There's other places where we can disagree, but proclamation should be easy. And to Commissioner Kennard's point, let's think big, let's work together, let's figure out what that should be, let's figure out what it should be named, and move forward with an actual plan and bring our partners along. And that's how you do it. So, nice speech.
I do want to just clarify a couple of things. Commissioner Kennard, you made a reference to materials being moved for a reef. Is that the materials from when they dredged the canal, or is this different materials?
No, actually, and a side note, I'm glad you asked. Mark Edwards actually deserves props for this. When they were taking down the old Barge Canal Bridge, he had that bridge cut up into very large sections. The roadway are cut up into huge planks that are stacked up there along DEP's property, along the Barge Canal, and the posts, the supporting pillars, are strategically cut into probably 16-inch-thick discs, big cement discs. And the idea behind it, those are all stacked up there as well. So rather than them just destroying the bridge and hauling it all off, he had them, he got permission from DEP to store it up there. I don't know how many years ago that's been now, but it's been stored up there, and what they're going to do is stack these planks with the discs in between them, so it'll be a waffle-like structure so that it creates space for not only marine life to grow, but fish moving in and out there and so forth. It was actually too much material to fit on the existing footprint of our offshore reef area out there, so he applied to the Army Corps of Engineers probably last year, maybe the year before, to expand the footprint, and they did by a significant, it wasn't as much as we wanted. I think we wanted additional 100 acres or get to 100 acres, and we ended up with somewhere around 45 or 50 acres, whatever it was that they gave us. We've got the permit for it, we've got the footprint out there for it. All the material, DEP has graciously allowed us to store it up there for all these years, and now we're working on funding, and we are actively working on that. That is something that this board will get to see come to fruition, building the offshore reef, as well as I believe we approved 11 or 12 inshore sites where we'll do reef balls. Those will be strategically located between Chaz and Crystal River. So, anyway, hate to go down that trail, but you gave me a great opportunity to talk about something I'm very passionate about.
Well, I wanted to verify, because I do think history is important to us, because many years ago, when that canal was dug, all those materials are on the bank. So when we talk about funding the boat ramp, what was initially asked for from the legislature for an appropriation, I believe was right around, I don't know, 7.3 million, and then we were going to use BP money of 3.4 or something in that zone and about $600,000 of other funding. That was considered to be Phase 1. Phase 1 would have given us two boat ramps, two gangways, and it was going to be to move all this material that was set there for years and years and years, nothing else, and 64 parking spots. That same Phase 1 in 2013, 14 would have been about $3 million. So when we asked for the appropriation, what dismayed me a little bit is about if we're going to ask counties to other counties if they're bought in, and they're going to have, this is a regional boat ramp. So Hernando, Marion, Gainesville, Levy, everybody could be coming to the table. The state owns the property where the boat ramp is, we lease it. So now, my point was, we might as well ask for 10 million instead of 7.3 million. We'll take the 3.4 million from the BP, and we'll bond the rest of it, but we'll have a completed project. And the completed project is 20 boat ramps, 10 gangways, bathrooms, shelters, and parking for 300-plus spots. When we do these projects, we need to go in all-in, because that tells private sector dollars, "You felt it was worthy to invest in, so we will." If we would have done the opposite on the 7.3 million and had very little, why should anybody else come and invest? We didn't care enough to invest in it. So I wanted to point that out, and when we're talking about other counties, if they're going to have the benefit, maybe they should be asking for a part of the appropriation on the $10 million to help us get it across the finish line. I don't, I mean, I could go either way on this. I just want facts. I like dealing in numbers and facts. Congressman Bill Arakis sent a letter of support for this. This was ceremonial naming only. I called Dixie Hollins, he didn't seem to have any heartburn with it, said he just couldn't be here today. So we're going from boat ramp to the canal. And then when we get down to federal and state agencies, the last time I checked, they don't ever really come to us and tell us when they're going to do something in Tallahassee or in Washington, D.C., and they're going to pass down a mandate to us and tell us we have to live with it. We just keep putting up with it, and I can tell you, if you don't believe me, go read Florida Tax Watch. Local governments are taking it in the heiny all the time. We just keep taking, bearing more of the brunt to pay for everything that they don't want, and they pass it down to the local governments. So, in my opinion, this was nothing more to honor the men and women that have served our country proudly and have paid for the price of freedom that we get to live every day. My husband was in the military, my son was in the military. I see many members out here that were in the military, and I want to thank all of you for your service. I don't, as a chairperson, it's my job to have, I'm not going to say consensus all the time, but I do believe that when we're going to do something like this that's honoring our veterans, I do want a consensus. I believe they deserve a consensus of this board. So, I'm not sure where we want to go with this, but I do want, you know, do you want to name the boat ramp, or are you wanting to name the boat canal or the Barge Canal? I mean, what is it that we want here? So maybe what we do is direct staff to go back, have discussions with the veterans, with the veterans, because to me, this is what this is about. I, frankly, as it relates to funding from other people, the feds or whatever, I don't, I don't know. It doesn't matter to me if we ever get funding again for anything if we're just, it's a ceremonial naming to honor the veterans.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finnegan.
You brought up a very good point with Congressman Bill Arakis. If we're going to get federal funding, who are we going to ask? The man that's supporting us doing this today. It's just a poor look. Our veterans are sitting here patiently, probably going, "What in the world is going on?" I'm sure they think this is completely ludicrous, and I'm sure they'll probably have plenty to say about it later. I would like, because it is out here now, and we will be asking for federal funding, and the person that will be asking and fighting for it on our behalf has supported this wholeheartedly and has worked, probably like no other congressman we've had before, on things pertaining to Citrus County. I think you, I understand your points, I just don't think you're correct. I think the right thing to do is move ahead, like Commissioner Bayes said. Let's honor our vets, let's respect our congressmen, and it's American freedom. said, let's honor our vets, let's respect our congressmen, and it's American freedom. Somebody put out there that this was political. I think that is nonsense. American freedom is not, does not belong to any political party. It belongs to all of us, all of our American citizens. And to echo Commissioner Bayes, thank you, veterans, for being here. Thank you for the service that you have given us. I think that's just a very easy thing that people say, but some of us really do understand that you have seen and done things that none of us have seen or done or ever could imagine. So I give you my heartfelt thanks, as I'm sure others do.
Commissioner Kennard.
I share your frustration with the unfunded mandates that we get. That is, that has long been a frustration, as well as the state preempting us on many things. And it seems like each session, we get more and more, I guess, preemption handed down from the state of what we're no longer allowed to do, what they're going to take over. However, we would be remiss to not acknowledge also the, the help that we get from DEP with funding septic sewer projects, different water projects. In this particular case, DEP is, is leasing us. They've agreed to lease us this piece of property many years ago for, I believe it's a dollar a year. And they do that on a number of, of projects around the county. To Commissioner Finnegan's point about Representative Congressman Bill O'Rourke, have a tremendous amount of respect for him. He's a great Republican up there, he's a great representative for us. But we're not asking for federal funding on this. This is asked, this is a state, a state ask from the legislature. I would, I would think, and I would hope that Congressman Bill O'Rourke would still be supportive of this. And whatever we end up deciding to name in honor of our veterans, I, but I would bet he will be there for the ribbon cutting and support it to that extent. My motion would be that we deny C1, that we, we turn this down, we direct staff to come back with some ideas for us to have a discussion about, something that all five of us can get on board with, and then we can put that out there as, as something that is real, that's a cooperative, a cooperative agreement between everybody, and isn't just ceremonial. That, that we really do have a Veterans Fishing Pier, that people in Marion County, that people over in Volusia County may want to come over here, and when they're, when they're Googling something, a place to access the water, Veterans Fishing Pier shows up. Or, like I said, you know, an elevated area at the ramp itself, or the entire ramp facility, you know, the Veterans Boat Launch Facility. Things like that have real meaning, they're not just ceremonial. So that's my motion, that we would deny this, we would turn this down today, have staff come back with some ideas, and then we can come up with something real.
Second.
I just want to point, excuse me, Madam Chair, that we're, we're not changing a name today. We're, we're just doing the ceremonial thing, saying to move on, but I, I'm not going to beat the dead horse. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to continue to disagree with both of you, but at least that opens it up for, to hear what other people have to say.
So, Madam Attorney, I know that we have no real procedures or rules on proclamations. If we're not going to pass it, do we actually take a motion on it, or do we just let it die?
Well, you have a motion in a second. So you could, you could do either, but now that you have it.
Okay, so I have, I have a motion.
Or you could, or you could, you could ask the movers if they...
Does it make it easier if I rescind my motion, we just, and if the second is rescinded, and we just let this C1 die, and staff will come back to us with some ideas?
I would prefer that.
Well, that, that wasn't consensus, because maybe I want to make a motion to approve it. There's a lot of people here today wanting to see this go through. So if it's denied, at least I know I'm on the right side of it.
All right.
Anybody want to trade me chairs?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Finnegan is trying to paint two of us in the corner as anti-American, and I don't appreciate it.
I'm not painting anything, ma'am.
If you're forcing us to take a no vote on this, then you most certainly are.
You just took it. You just took it. You just made the motion to deny. How am I forcing you?
I have the floor.
How am I forcing you anything?
I have the floor, Commissioner Finnegan, point of order. I was raised by three military officers with a combined seven decades. I was raised in a Navy family. I lived on Navy bases. I am as pro-veteran as anyone. Just wanted to get that out there. Madam Chair, I relinquish the floor.
Well, Madam Chair, I'm going to defend myself, because I'm going to point out that I did not force anyone. Two people made a motion to deny, all on their own. I tried to talk them out of it. If you, they want to deny it, that's on them, and that's fine. I understand. We all have different opinions, and we should be able to be fine and shake hands afterwards and not have all this. But we all know what's been happening behind the scenes for the last couple of years.
All right. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to be the waning person here. I, I'm, as the chair, if you're okay with letting the motion, rescinding your motion, I'm going to let this, take it back. I'm not going to support it either. So I know you don't have enough votes, even if you wanted to make a motion. I think this is the more appropriate way to handle it. I'm sorry that, that our veterans are here and having to witness this, but I would like, Mr. Howard, I'd like you to weigh in.
Yeah, well, first of all, I just want to say one thing. Actually, I was the, the last community I was at, we were the first nation to receive the first Coast Guard community designation. So this is important to me, veterans. So I want to make sure I take that lightly. My focus has always been the Coast Guard coming. So I know there was some mention of that, I'm not saying anything out of line. But that's my focus, has been on the veterans. I come from a family that's also, that have veterans and things like that. Are there better ways you can do it? Absolutely. I'm all about that. I think you have a great asset there on that. I did a lot of research on that canal. I've heard people call it a ditch. I call it more than that. I call it a gateway of opportunity for this community. I think it's always good to have a discussion. But my heart has always been with the veterans and heroes. And there's more than just the veterans, you know, you have that, the trooper, the Monreal Bridge, all those things out there, as I was out in that area, that I think what an opportunity to showcase that asset out there, that, for the next generation. So that's, those are things important to me. But I want to make sure that, before I leave here today, my heart's always been there. Actually, I have a very strong relationship with all the military, including commandants of the US Coast Guard, and past, and generals, and these kind of things, although I didn't have a military background. So that's important to make sure, before anybody leaves this audience, that my heart's always been there. You always got to go first, so you got to have the courage to create change. That's difficult, those kind of things, but you always bring things forward and those kind of things. Can you do things differently? Absolutely. And part of this drive was a little bit because the Coast Guard is going to do a ribbon-cutting ceremony March the 6th. So those are just a few things to put out there. Can we come back with other opportunities? Absolutely. Over the weekend, I talked to a lot of veterans. They've come up with all kinds of different things, maybe to call it, you call it different things like that. All I want is to showcase this asset for this community, which I think has really kind of been dormant a little bit. You have all the, they got the Greenway, which is amazing. I love it. Actually, I've been on that trail system with my family. But what an opportunity to actually do something amazing for this community, for the next generation, the region. This is an asset not only for this community, the state, and federal. So I want to see something amazing come out of this, and that's worth it to me, to be able to have these discussions and things like that. So, but I wanted to make sure, you know, my, where my heart was with the veterans, that'll never alter what I do, and I'll never apologize for that. But I've had a lot of experience working in Kings Bay and things like that with all the great veterans, and our freedom is because of them. So everybody that's in this audience, that's veterans, thank you for your service, and thank you for continuing to do all the great stuff, and the families as well.
Thank you.
Madam.
Commissioner Barrick.
I've been sitting here listening to all of this, back and forth and back and forth. I was contacted once and asked what I thought. And at that point in time, I thought it would be a nice thing to change the name. Over time, I've sat back and I've thought about it, and I thought about how many things and we have to change. And when I was, when I was voted in, I told you, I don't want to spend money we don't have to spend. How many pieces of paper, how many signs, how many this, how many that? It's going to cost money. So then I listened to Commissioner Kennard, and I, I understand where he's coming from. But you need to understand, it's just like we named part of Independence Highway another name for Dr., and I can't even remember what the doctor's name is. Okay? We've got Gulf to Lake Highway, which is 44, two names. We've got Le Canto Highway, which is 491, two names. Almost everything in this county has two names. And if some of us want to refer to it as American Freedom Canal, I think that little portion, that is a canal, would be fine to do that, because it's, it's not doing the whole thing from that's, you know, from the Atlantic Ocean to the Gulf. It's just doing one little section, just like we did for Independence Highway. It's one little section. And I thought about this spending of the money, because I'm very, very frugal. Okay? So it is going to cost money, so you need to know that. So if we decide to do this, name changes are not free. Okay? Anything you change a name to is going to cost. But I also want you to realize, my great-grandfather built the Suez Canal. My father, his brother, were in World War II. My uncle was in the Korean War. My husband was a veteran from Vietnam. His twin brother spent 20 years in the Air Force. My great-nephew is in the Air Force. I have a lot of respect for veterans, and for doing things properly. And veterans know, there is an order of operations. And that's why when Commissioner Kennard started referring to all these groups that should have been contacted, yeah, I agree, we should have contacted them, but I'm not sure if we knew to, need to, if we're only going to be doing one little section, that is the Citrus County section. So I hate to say this, but I will agree with Commissioner Finnegan, that we need to do something positive. It doesn't say Veterans Canal, it says American Freedom. And that's what the veterans stood for. That's why they signed up for the freedoms of the Americans, not for individual freedom individually, you know, but for the whole country. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
Great leadership on what you were trying to achieve with this, with us rescinding the motion in the second. Thank you for that. Great counsel by the attorney. I want to remind everybody in the audience that we are under sunshine law. The only place we get to talk is here. So when we have a family argument, you get to see it. And my apologies for that. But that's the point, is that the commissioners knew that not everybody was on board, and I stand by this, that, and by Commissioner Kennard's suggestion, that we have an actual real discussion about what to do with this, and how we need to get everybody else on board, and what we need to do. Because like him, I am not opposed to it. I am opposed to how this was tried, tried to jam down our throats and got ahead of the skis. Okay? Because when you move this fast, when you move this fast, it is the law of unintended consequences. You got to see around corners in this job. So again, just, just imagine how difficult it is to be sitting up here when you can't talk to your colleagues at all, outside of chambers, other than, hey, how are you today? That's it. Okay? This is, it's hard. We've got to fight up here. So my apologies. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. Yes, Ms. Lynn. Sorry. I just had a few things to say. And I am a United States Air Force veteran, myself. And I would just say that the US Board on Geographic Names is the entity who names matters like this. And when you search on their website, this canal comes up, and it's called the Cross Florida Barge Canal. And it was named, it was named with that entity in 1987. So if the name is going to be changed, that entity needs to be the, the entity that changes the name.
All right. So that, the motion has been rescinded, and therefore we are going to move on to time certance.
Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Just for clarification on the motion, they had a discussion of if we rescinded, but they never actually rescinded.
Commissioner Kennard did rescind.
I'll rescind my motion.
Yes, I rescind.
Thank you.
All right. We are moving on to time certain capital project update. You ready?
Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners, Erin Doran, Management and Budget Director. This is a capital project update that was requested. I just want to let you know, this is not every project that is in our CIP. These are projects that are funded either by Ad Valorem, whether that be general fund, transportation, fire, library. If we want to do an update regarding enterprise projects, we would have to do that separately, as they have quite a few of their own. Other projects that are not included in here include equipment replacement, maintenance of guardrails, items like that, that we would do every year. They aren't necessarily project-specific. We have it broken down into categories. The first are fully funded projects. What I will let you know is I have a copy of the presentation in front of me. We have had updates as early as 15 minutes before our meeting started, so I may reference this to give you the most accurate status update for these projects. So on this first slide, you'll see there's a project, the status, county funding, and then other funding. So county funding will be any funding that is generated, received by the county. So that's Ad Valorem. That includes impact fees, boat launch fees, any type of funding like that. The other funding is going to be grant and appropriations funding. So you'll see on this slide, we have the Beverly Hills Pickleball Court. Those work authorizations have been approved. The Central Ridge Community Center roof, that has, project has been completed.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Kennard.
Erin, I know this isn't in, necessarily in your wheelhouse, but since we're talking about it here, Beverly Hills Pickleball Courts, those, the timeline we were given, is that the contractor had planned on having those completed by mid-March. Is that still on schedule?
I can ask Director Head to come up and answer that.
Director? Yes, they are on schedule. They're on site. They're actually putting down rock now and creating the new base, so we're expecting that. The, the next section is, once they put the pavement down, it has to cure for 30 days before they can put the, put the coating on for the pickleball courts. So we expect that to be done in March.
Great work. Thank you.
We'll let you know.
Got a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you put signs out there that let the people know, do not walk on this, and put some tape, because they will try playing.
We're going to put orange safety fencing around it and signs. So we've got it covered.
They're putting their handprints in it. They're not going to walk on.
Oh, no, they're going to play.
So much for not spending money on signs.
Yeah.
We have the Central Ridge Nature Trail Connector, that's under construction, with completion estimated in 2025. The Coastal Library renovation, also under construction, estimated completion in 2025. The courthouse fire alarm replacement, they are waiting on permits, and they estimate completion during 2025. The next is the Crystal River Airport Fuel Tanks. The bid opening for this project will be February 18th. The Fort Island Trail Beach Parking, the NEPA study has been completed for that project. The Fort Island Trail Park Floating Dock, that is under construction with estimated The Fort Island Trail Park Floating Dock, that is under construction with estimated completion in twenty twenty-five. The Floral Oak Place Structure Replacement, the purchase order has been issued to the vendor. They expect completion in twenty twenty-five. And the Harp Tennis Hockey Court Lighting, they are working on issuing the purchase order, and they estimate completion in twenty twenty-five. There's the Highland Basketball Court Rebuild. They were supposed to do a pre-bid meeting with continuing service contractors, January thirtieth. The estimated funding for that is a hundred thousand. The Historical Courthouse Renovation, this is multiple projects that were approved through ARPA. Purchase orders have been issued to vendors. There's the Inverness Airport Business Park Phase Two. They are working on work authorizations for purchasing. There's the Jail Boiler. The bids were received January thirtieth. They were under review. I did talk to Director Hall yesterday, and he said that the bids came in, and they estimate they will actually need an additional three hundred thousand dollars to complete this project. It was already on this list, and I couldn't really move it at that time. So, just so you're aware, when it comes back to you, there will be a request for an additional three hundred thousand to complete that project. Holder Industrial Park Utilities, the budget is actually on this meeting to be adopted. LGB Roof Coating, the purchase order has been issued to the vendor. They estimate completion in twenty twenty-five. Roof Replacement for Lakes Region Library, they estimate completion in March of twenty twenty-five. There's the West Citrus Center Reroof. They're completing the scope of work, and they estimate completion in twenty twenty-five. The West Citrus Fire Alarm Upgrade, they're currently waiting on permits, but estimate completion in twenty twenty-five. There is County Road four ninety-one Widening. We can call it the next phase or Phase Two. That is under construction. And as of a week ago, they estimate that is fifty-five percent complete. There is a Fuel Farm Expansion at Fleet. There is a design purchase order is being issued to the vendor. Corridor Alignment Study for four ninety-one. The attorney is working on contracts with their subconsultants. The Ozillo Bridge, that is currently under construction. That was in the budget for this year, and it did require a increase because of some issues that were found when they started that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
The, the Ozillo, Ozillo, the Ozillo Bridge Repair, it looks like, from driving out there, it looks like the repair is complete, but there's still the floating buoys to contain debris. Can, we have somebody make an inquiry into that and find out that, because...
I can help you.
Those, those bridges are used for boats and so forth, to go underneath, to, to get past that roadway. If, if that construction's complete, can we get those buoys up?
I asked about this in my briefing.
Yeah?
So, when they started to do the repair, the materials, it was, they're going to have to do more work than they anticipated?
So it's not done?
So it's not done.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Harp Soccer Field Five Lighting, that's under construction, and they estimate completion in April of twenty twenty-five. Then there's the South Off Seale Street Drainage Improvement, that is currently under design. We have a SCOP project, West Mustang Boulevard. This will not be funded by FDOT until twenty twenty-six. The SCOP project for Deltona, FDOT is currently reviewing the solicitation documents. That is a requirement prior to us issuing that solicitation. And then we have a SCOP project at East Turner Camp, and FDOT is reviewing the bid proposals for that project.
I've got a question.
Sure.
So you have fully funded projects for SCOP here. You have Mustang, Deltona, and East Turner, but you have on Mustang, not funded by DOT until twenty twenty-six. And then if you go back to pavement management projects, under SCOP, you have County Road four seventy, Dunklin, Apopka, and Gospel Island. And it appears as those, as though those are funded.
So, these they have, my understanding is, it is going to be, and it's been approved to be funded in twenty twenty-six. So the reason it's on this list is because the county has already put in their share, and then we're expecting FDOT's share to come through for twenty twenty-six.
What is... Okay, never mind, I see. Gotcha.
This is just kind of a...
Commissioner Berry. I got a question. I went through and I looked at the, are we still getting seventy-five from the state and twenty-five for us?
For SCOP projects?
Yeah.
I believe it's slightly different, because I think we only... We have to pay a little bit more, we cover the contingency.
That's what, because when I went through and I did the numbers, it's not seventy-five, twenty-five anymore.
Right, they don't, SCOP doesn't cover contingency, we have to. It doesn't mean, obviously, that we'll use it, but it's something that we put in every project in case something happens.
I do want to go back to something, just because I know we've talked about it, but it's the Inverness Airport. When I took office in twenty-two, you had five million. I went to Tallahassee and lobbied for the nine million, and it's, I saw it in here somewhere.
It's going to be slide four.
Okay, I'll wait till you get there, then. I mean, that was awarded to us in July of twenty-three, I think, the nine million. So, I, you know, I guess, I know we turned the dirt, we did the first phase of the industrial park, but I'd really like to see us get into a habit, when we know that there's a full project, that we don't let them stop, that we have a, a program in place, that we're bidding, we're getting out, we're, it just rolls right into the next phase, because I, I'm very concerned that sometimes we may end up returning this money if we don't act on it. And it's, there's no reason for us not to act if we're getting the money from the legislature.
I don't disagree. We just had some big challenges on that property with sinkholes and everything else. So we had to overcome those. We're, I think we're going out to bid now, real soon on that one. But I, I agree, getting these projects done, and that's why we have the milestones, and we're kind of going through this. But a lot of times, there's, there's a lot more details that, to get to the finish line, but we're trying to expedite every way we can to spend that money. It's like four ninety, that's why you're seeing four ninety-one and all those accomplishments, because we're focused. But those are good points. We're going to continue to find more best practices, the streamline, to get stuff to
This is just a pie chart, basically shows of the projects. We have started sixty percent of those projects. Thirty-two percent are under review. Four percent are budgeted in a future year, and four percent, or it equates to one project, is complete. These are projects that require additional funding. The first one, and this is under general government, is Agenda Software. The scores have been completed, and presentations are pending. They are going to be at the end of March. So, this particular software is going to come over under the board. We are estimating approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the program for the first year. The next project is the Beautify Citrus Gateway Signs. There is a conceptual design that has been completed. I know they are working on the next steps as far as getting a final design. They're estimating at about fifty thousand dollars per sign. There's five signs, or five sign sites that have been selected, so about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's the Jail Chiller Replacement. This project has not started. This is actually replacing two chillers over at the Detention Center. And they believe that if they wait until next year and get the additional funding, that it will be cheaper to purchase two at one time, instead of doing one now, and then doing one next year. The Judicial Renovation, this project includes the Coke Building, as well as the second floor of the courthouse, that is currently being designed. There's two point nine million dollars that was funded this year through CIP, and they are saying it's going to be an additional three point five million dollars that will be requested in the CIP for fiscal year twenty-six to complete that project.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
I had asked Carlton about this, and he said that it also included us, everyone that needs to vacate the second floor, our new quarters, is that correct?
You would have to ask him. Do you want him to come up and...
He's coming up right now, behind you.
Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners. Carlton Hall, Public Works Director. So, with this renovation, it, it requires different steps, and there's a lot of different entities involved in moving around at different locations. So we have to find space for those who are going to be relocated from the courthouse. And this budget number, these numbers that we've put together, include that relocation.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Does that mean that, that, that's rehabbing the Coke Building, then?
Yes, it is. Yeah. Coke Building, as well as the second floor of the courthouse.
There is a new courthouse generator that is currently under design. So far, a million dollars has been budgeted through CIP for that project. They estimate it will require an additional one point two million dollars to complete that project. There's also funding budgeted for the Sheriff Evidence Garage. They are currently working on a site location. I believe they've come to an agreement on that. However, they believe that it will cost an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars to complete that project. Fire Rescue has a new fire station in Inverness. Design has started for that. There is two point five million dollars set aside from impact fees. This project is one of the ones that has been sent for state appropriations. We also don't know what the actual final cost of this fire station will be to construct. Under Economic Development, we have Watson Road. This project is currently on hold. There is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted currently for this project. Under Parks, we have the Historical Courthouse Landscaping. We will be piggybacking off the city of Inverness. My understanding is they have still not selected a vendor, so the cost for this is unknown at this time. The Inshore Reef, like Commissioner Kennard mentioned earlier, this is actually being funded through Restore. We are waiting on the grant award. We know they have reviewed the application, so we are just waiting to hear back from them. We have the LED lighting conversion. Right now, it's doing Central Ridge District Park, and they estimate completion in twenty twenty-five. You will see additional funding from the county and others, because every year, they have new fields that they have in the CIP to continue to do the LED lighting conversion. There's offshore reef enhancement. Again, this is through Restore. The solicitation has been put together. It is currently being reviewed by Bell Morel and neighbors Giblin Nickerson. This is a requirement under Restore, so as soon as we hear back, it will be able, for the solicitation, to be advertised. Airport Landscaping Signs, site evaluation is underway. There's currently about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars budgeted. They estimate an additional four hundred and sixty-five thousand will be needed to complete the project. There's Inverness Air Sport Space Obstruction Clearing. This is Phase Four, is currently in process, and they are researching historical land acquisition. You'll see there's an additional seventy-four thousand required of county funding for next year. That's just six thousand dollars. However, we put the total amount, so you know what it would be to complete the project. Inverness Construct Corporate Hangar, this project is on hold. They have current funding, and then there's additional county funding and other funding through grants. Transportation has a corridor alignment study for Cardinal. This is pending board approval, and this would be funded by impact fees. There's the Beverly Hills Neighborhoods Flood Mitigation. This is under design. The final construction cost is not known. This would be funded by the Stormwater MSBU. The same goes for the Castle Lake Flood Mitigation. They have requested a design scope. They have the Hamburg Frankfurter Drainage Improvements, that is under design. Final construction cost is not known, but will be funded through the Stormwater MSBU. And the Homasasas Springs Oxide Area, they have requested a design scope, and that will be funded from the Stormwater MSBU. Inverness DRA Flood Mitigation, under design, final construction cost unknown. That would be from the Stormwater MSBU, as well as the Placid Avenue Drainage Improvement, which is under design. The Plantation Estates Drainage, which is under design. The Safe Route to School, Phase Two Forest Ridge, this project is being managed by FDOT. It will not be funded by FDOT until twenty twenty-six, but the county has funded their portion through the Stormwater MSBU. And then there's a Wood Hill Woodside Drainage Improvement. This is under design with final construction cost unknown, but funded through the Stormwater MSBU.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
Just, just a, a point to explain, the Safe Route to School, Phase Two for Forest, Forest Ridge. For those interested as to why we would be funding a sidewalk project with the Stormwater MSBU money, is DOT has said on these projects, they don't pay for drainage anymore. And on this particular project, required a tremendous amount of work for drainage. So that's why we're able to use the Stormwater MSBU money to handle that part of it. DOT is all about building safe routes to school, but they want the local entities to take care of the drainage part of it.
This is a pie chart that just shows the projects requiring funding. We have forty-four percent under review, forty percent have started, and sixteen percent are in a future year. The next category is long-term projects and pavement management projects. Long-term projects, we have the Barge Canal Boat Ramp. Design and permitting has been completed. We are currently waiting for final funding. So below, we have some bullet points. The last time this was discussed was at the January twenty-first Strategic Planning Workshop. The board is seeking funding for the entire project, two million, twenty million dollars. There was an appropriations request made for ten million dollars. If appropriations are approved, the county discussed financing the remaining six million dollars. And then the remaining funding includes budgeted county funds and Restore grant funds. Obviously...
Madam Chair.
Just a question on this project, or the, I'm going to think positively here, that the legislature and the governor will, will smile on this project, and will get the money we're asking for. The, the remaining part that needs to be financed, there's been some question about whether or not, because it's on DEP property, that the county would be able to bond a launch or parking fee. And I don't know that we've gotten a clear answer on that, but that would be the avenue that ultimately, I would suggest we look to, to finance the remainder of this, would be, this board would pass a, a, a res, be a resolution or covenant to, to budget and appropriate, should the parking or launch fees not cover it. Then we would have to go, you know, to park money, park impact fees, that type of thing. But hopefully, we're able to, we're able to bond the... But um uh hopefully, we're able to, uh we're able to bond the launch or parking fees. But we should know that in advance before the legislature says yes or no, uh that yes, we can bond those. Should that question arise, this is how we're going to do it.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
There's a point of um, I just wanna check my math here. On the potential revenue sources, it says for a bond, it's twenty million for twenty years. Annual debt service, one point five million. So my math is showing if we um finance the remaining six million on the boat ramp, that's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
Approximately, yes.
Um and that's for twenty years, so it's nine million.
Yes, there'd be, it's slightly more, but yes.
And does any of that change if we're bonding uh boat ramp fees versus just doing a regular bond?
So when we looked at it quickly as far as what we charge now for boat launch fees and knowing that D E P splits the revenue with us fifty fifty, um when I spoke to Mr. Hall, it looked like we would have to have something like ninety two thousand boat launches per year to cover the debt service because we would then have to split it. So um we did contact our financial advisor just to see like, hey, if we bonded it, what would that look like? I don't know that we can say, or at least we don't believe that there would be enough boat launch fees to cover it. Um so the next question would then be, what source would we use? We could definitely use boat launch fees to pay for part of it. I don't know that that's what they would use to secure the debt. So that would be our next conversation.
And that also ends up impoverishing the rest of our ramps too, so obviously we gotta figure that part out. I'm in favor of it. I'm just trying to figure out the money.
So my question would be, if we're making a capital investment into D E P's property and we're leasing it for a dollar a year, could we write them a letter and ask them to use the, their portion of those fees for the balance of the six million dollars or whatever that number is to pay the debt?
I would think that would be a legal question. I would imagine you could write anyone a letter and ask them to do that. I don't know specifically.
Seems like a pretty good deal.
Yeah, I don't know what our lease specifically says if we can do that. I, you know, I don't have it, but I'm sure we could ask.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Canard.
Yes, when I brought this up at a previous meeting, when the gentleman from F W C was here at a county commission meeting, we, at the time, we were closing a ramp, I believe, on the Withcucci River up near Donellen. And uh there was some concern about uh getting rid of one ramp, decreasing access to the waterways. And he told us at that time that when the, when the board is ready to build a ramp up here uh on the Barge Canal, that uh they have a program to help fund some of this. And so I have to wonder if we've reached out to them, uh what does that look like? What portion of that uh will F W C help to fund? Uh so then maybe we're not looking at having to come up with an extra six million dollars, you know? If, if they've got two million they can put towards it or three million they can put towards it, that significantly reduces uh what it costs to cover that debt.
Well, I also gave a name in the, in my history of, from when we looked at it back in the beginning, there was another program that they said that you could ask for funding. I'm not sure that anybody's done that either.
Yeah, yeah.
So there, I would have to go back and look at the name of the grant program. There was one um that Mark Edwards um had let us know about and when we contacted them, currently at that time, they were only giving out grants of three hundred thousand dollars. That was the max. Um I don't know what that, I don't remember the name of that particular one, but we can look at it and we can look and see what else is out there. If that's something you wanna do before we hear back from the appropriations, we can start looking now. I'll definitely find out what the one was that we had already contacted. But when we contacted that particular one, they said you had to be within two years of building. So there was nothing done at that point to get to three hundred thousand because we weren't, we weren't there yet.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that he, in fact, I'm fairly certain he didn't give us a number. But he was very clear about, look, we understand you're getting rid of one ramp. When you're ready to build this uh, this, this uh Barge Canal ramp, uh we have programs in place to help communities build these things. So I, I don't know what that program looks like, but absolutely, I think any amount we can get out of them uh would be, uh would be a bonus. If it's three hundred thousand, it's three hundred thousand, but if it's three million, that's even better.
It is. We will contact them and reach out.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Finnigan.
And you had mentioned that um it would take, I think you said ninety two thousand launches to cover. And you said we didn't think that would happen. Was there an estimated amount of launches just from that boat ramp that that's estimated, you know, once it's fully complete?
So I, I did ask that and we don't have a number. Um this was a conversation I had um with Director Hall. I said, this is the number I came up with because I believe the board had discussed only using the fees that were generated at the Barge Canal. Um and so that's ten dollars currently per launch. We do have a twenty five dollar and a seventy five dollar yearly pass for those who are residents and non-residents, but those are not specific to any one boat ramp. So several things could be done. Um the board could choose to use all of those pass fees to put towards the payment. You could choose to increase the launch fee just for that particular boat ramp. We can ask um D E P if they'd be willing to use their share towards the debt service payment. There are several things that could be done. Um it just seemed like ninety two thousand launches would be.
A lot.
A lot.
Well, then I guess it wouldn't be launches because if they have a pass, the launches would be irrelevant.
Right, so that's why we were saying it would have to be ninety two thousand launches of those paying ten dollars per launch. And, and there are other places, not necessarily for boat launch, but even if you buy like a, a pass for state parks, there are certain state parks you can't use the pass at. So the, the board could also choose to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Oh, Commissioner Canard.
Just one, one last comment. Uh I, I just, I can't let it go by with, with having it out there that we would potentially use launch fees from our other boat ramps to build up there. When we had this discussion in passing that, um passing that ordinance, we were very specific that those fees would not be used to build this new ramp, uh that those fees were being collected and, you know, many boaters are not happy about, about paying them. Uh but there's also plenty that understand that we need to improve our existing ramp. Uh those fees were being collected specifically to improve existing facilities and that it was gonna be, you know, it would fall on the county commission to find ways to fund this new, uh this new facility on the Barge Canal. So I just, I hope that that doesn't, that idea doesn't get legs to it that you know, that we would use that. And it wasn't what you were suggesting, just throw, just spitballing, throwing ideas out there. But we'll get there when the time is ready and hopefully when the legislature sends ten million bucks our way.
Madam Chair, my apologies, Commissioner Canard. You're, I, thank you for reminding me. I forgot about that. Thank you.
The next project is a Halls River Road Multi-Use Path. Um this design is currently being done by F dot. Um the county received a state appropriation previously for two point three million dollars for design. The county has also budgeted a million dollars for this project. Um the Florida Department of Transportation received those funds and again have begun design. Additional funding will be needed for the construction of the project. However, that amount is not known at this time. The county has submitted an appropriations request totaling five million to the state to complete this project. The Citrus County Animal Shelter, um staff is completing the solicitation documents at this time. Um on January fourteenth, the board approved um the solicitation for the building and the alternates to determine the actual cost for construction. Current funding includes donation and surplus land proceeds. Once bids are received, the cost will be brought back to the board to determine the total funding required for the project. These slides are regarding pavement management. We put these together um because they all have to do with gas tax. So we have an annual road resurfacing C I P project. Uh these roads are designated yearly. This year, um there's sixteen point two million in the C I P. I did talk to Director Hall. He would like to increase that number to twenty one million dollars. Uh there's County Road four ninety one Hampshire. They've requested a design scope uh for that project. There's a Scott project for County Road four seventy resurfacing. Um this is not funded by F dot until twenty twenty seven. There's some money put aside by the county. There is additional county funding that will be required and additional F dot funding um that we are spe- uh expect. Uh the same for Scott Dunkland Street Resurfacing. This is on the program for twenty twenty eight. The county has put some funds aside. There will be additional funding required by the county and then um additional funding from F dot. And when I'm saying additional funding, these are projects that are matched with gas tax. So that is the funding source uh for these. There is a Popka, a Scott project for a Popka resurfacing. This currently is not funded until F dot, by F dot until twenty twenty six. Um you can see the county's portion would be approximately five hundred and seventy thousand and then one point two coming from F dot. There's also a Scott project for East Gospel Island Road Resurfacing, currently not funded until twenty twenty seven by F dot. Um the county has not put any funding aside yet for this particular project. So you'll see the county funding portion and then additional funding, which would be F dot. Um for fiscal year twenty six, the gas tax specific projects, so this is not road resurfacing, but just those projects is slightly under two million dollars. Um and so everyone aware, is aware, gas taxes are used to match the Scott projects, but they're also used for road resurfacing, not just residential, but also what they call functionally classified roads or like those connector roads that are used. There's gas tax ones that are used to cover debt service for four ninety one widening that has been done to date. And then it covers other maintenance like guardrail maintenance or fixing potholes. So I know sometimes when we're talking about gas tax, um s- some think, oh, it's just for road resurfacing, that's all it does. Well, it does a lot of road resurfacing, but not just road resurfacing that we go out to. But here, it matches Scott projects, which really helped the county get um some of those large roads done and also takes care of debt that we've taken out to do previous expansion. And then, like I said, um maintenance that is just required to keep our streets safe. These are the projects that are on the horizon. These are projects that either departments have told us they're thinking of adding to the C I P or they've discussed with us, uh the boards discussed. So the first one is the Inverness Airport Fuel Tank Replacement. Um this is to be funded in fiscal year twenty twenty six. This will require county funding of approximately four hundred thousand dollars and then we will get grant funding for the other one point three. We have airport terminals for each airport. My understanding is this will be added to the C I P for fiscal year twenty six, which you will see in April of this year. Um design must be completed prior to seeking grants. So our understanding is that it would be about a million dollars to do the design for these two terminals, but then they could apply for grants totaling approximately ten million dollars to construct those terminals at each of the airports. Uh there's Port Citrus Land Acquisition and Development. Uh this project would be to create a port um over by or on the cross Florida Barge Canal. So the three million dollars would be um to purchase land and then do some type of feasibility study um to move that project forward. Pirates Cove, um there was an offer made for Pirates Cove. My understanding is that we have still not heard back about that um and that it was nine hundred thousand dollars. There's Airfield Security Fence.
Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Canard.
Uh just a little correction on the Pirates Cove. Um the owner was less than impressed with the county's um uh realtor, South Florida Realtor. Uh grossly, um incomplete um contract offer on the property. And she was um a, a little put off that it wasn't more formal, uh better presented. Uh but my understanding, what is, what is coming our way, uh rather than a back and forth negotiation on the price, is that she has a number in mind that she's gonna want for this property and she is having her attorney draw up a uh, an M O U with the county to say, here's what I'm willing to sell the property for and um I will give you X number of days to come up with the money. If not, then she's gonna go to the um selling off the property in the private world. So that's, that's my understanding of, of what's transpired to date. And uh so I think probably, just guessing, I would say probably within the next week or two, uh we will see, uh we'll see an M O U from the property owner and uh outlining the uh, the terms on what she's willing to move forward as a uh, a partner in this deal. So anyway, just so everybody understands what's up.
The remaining projects, um we don't know. These are just projects that have been discussed and the totals are completely unknown to us at this time. There's Airfield Security Fence and Gate uh for each airport. So my understanding is that, you know, there could possibly be grants to pay for part of this, but they are still working on that. There's a Resiliency Shelter and Moving the Fairgrounds. Uh we don't currently have a cost for that. We would need some type of board direction to move forward with that project. Uh these next two say Ozello, but they are different bridges, different projects than the ones that are currently being worked on. The Ozello Trail Causeway Bridge, this is on our L M S list, our Local Mitigation Strategy. Um it will require grant funding. I can tell you for this particular Ozello project, the estimate is fifteen point six million dollars. Um the next is the Ozello Trail Causeway Road Shoulders. Again, this is on our L M S list. It will require grant funding. The estimate for the project at this time is sixteen point three million dollars. The next few projects are for the detention center, um a P A system for the detention center. I did actually get an update right before the meeting on this. There was a quote obtained and they're saying it would be six hundred thousand dollars to put the P A system in. Um they will be putting it in the C I P with the funding being requested over the next three years, so approximately two hundred thousand dollars per year for that. Uh new cell doors for the detention center and a new fire suppression system for the detention center. The next three have to do with the expansion of County Road four ninety one to two two hundred. Um that is the land design and construction. Um for both the land and design, alignment needs to be completed um prior to moving forward. And then the construction design would need to be completed. I don't have estimated dates for that. Um there were some costs um provided. However, my understanding is it will be due to the alignment as to how much it will actually um cost the county. Inverness Airport Business Park, U S forty one access. We would need board direction on how to proceed with that. Um a potential new park acquisition, a homeless shelter broadband initiative, and then grant match. This year, a million dollars was put into the grant match for the C I P. Um so as we do C I P and bring it to you in April, it's just something for the board to think about as to what you would like to see that match um put in for twenty six.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Canard.
Yeah, I had, thank you. It's my understanding that um at least, at least one, one large development that is not underway, but is proposed anyway. Um that part of the negotiation with the county is to handle widening the road in front of these developments, handling that, that part of the infrastructure. And rather than allowing the developer necessarily to build the road, that the county is either um taking an I O U from them that when we do decide to widen it, that they're gonna pay for that section or that they're giving us the money upfront uh for their section of road to have it widened. Uh my, my question is this, is that if, if we're getting that kind of money out of a development, why wouldn't that money go into this grant match? And then let's go, rather than widening, you know, a stretch that's maybe a mile long, why wouldn't we put it into this grant match and go to D O T and say, you know, we've got seven million and look- and look for an additional 7 million match out of DOT? Now, instead of paving 7 million miles of road, now we're paving 14 million miles of road uh because that, that match money was given to us from the developer. I mean, just, uh, I, I don't know. It seems, seems like that would be a better avenue for us to go rather than looking piece by piece in front of each one of these developments. Let's see if we can get that money upfront or get them to build it out. Um, I don't know, just a thought.
I like the idea. I guess I could say a lot about on looking at most of these on here. Um, I'm a little frustrated. I mean, that the animal shelter, I think, was talked about for maybe 10 years and there was never money being set aside year over year for it. Um, so when I look at all of these projects on here, um, I think we need to really start taking a very long look at projects and we need to start putting funding in. We know that these corridor alignments are going to need to happen, you know, Cardinal 495, Venable Rock Crusher Road, they're never going to get any cheaper. But we should take a lump sum and put it in here and talk about corridor alignments and say, we're going to put them in here. But I think we need to do a little bit deeper dive. I think when we do these things, we need to say, like 491, we've got a corridor alignment on it. We know that anticipated there's 250,000 square feet of um commercial on the front end, roughly 6,000 homes. We need to start forecasting and looking what the projections, what that means in revenue and dollars and what other costs are going to be associated with that. But then what's the revenue, almost doing like a balance sheet on it, a profit and loss statement? What does this mean to us long term? It's very hard to sit up here and say, these are all great things, but we have no idea where this money's coming from. We're not forecasting, we're not projecting, we're not telling a full story. And I, and that's frustrating to me because there's no business out there. I couldn't run my business by doing my CIP and looking at it like this because I'm not anticipating anything that's going to be coming towards me and what that revenue is going to generate. But I also, I mean, if you, we've got eight, 1,800 plus miles of road in this county and we're putting 16 million dollars a year in resurfacing. We're doing roughly hmm 40 miles a year. It's going to take us 45 years. The first set of roads are going to be what? Worn out before we ever get started on it again. So I, I mean, I, we've, I think we've got to do, we've got to look deeper. There's more to this than what we're, than what we're doing. Sorry. It's frustrating because, I mean, we're telling, we're trying to tell a story to our constituents and say, they want roads repaved. They made, they made an investment in a house on that road, but we made an investment in that road. We have an obligation. I mean, it's almost like prioritizing these projects. Um, we can't take on more until we're actually taking care of the, the things that matter most that we've already built. We can't build something new until we take care of what we built. And um, you know, I, I'd like to see our, I know, I think you said it's coming in March, the little financial sheet. Um, I think it's a quarter late. I mean, I, I personally think we'd be much better served if we were almost doing a, taking a look at our finances every month. I think when, by the time when we get into budgeting, when we start talking about it in May and we're going to set our budget October 1, um, it's pretty hard to change course. I mean, it's kind of already determined. And I think, I know we're doing our five-year strategic um financial plan. That's, I think we've made some really good moves. I'm not trying to beat you up, but I think we've done some things. I think the uh forecasting is going to help get us um where we know the growth and development's going to be, where we know we're going to have to put dollars in towards infrastructure to support the growth and development. It helps us know what we're going to ask and require developers coming to us. Um, and then the five-year financials, I, you know, when you're, you got a half a billion dollar budget every year, uh, we, we probably should be setting two-year budgets. We shouldn't be, not to say that it's not going to change, but we should be able to forecast out two years, knowing what's coming our way and being ahead of this. Um, so I, I mean, I appreciate this. I know I'm sounding a little negative. I don't mean to sound negative, but none of this works if there's no dollars.
Just a lot of F-bombs, that's all. Into that, all these studies are going to show you need more money. Um, but we're going to do our best job. I think you are making progress, like you said, for, you know, you're doing a lot of things right. We're trying to catch up. I think this is a good start. I think some of it monthly, I'd love to do monthlies. There are some timing issues because of the clerk's offices. I think it's the clerk, but it's the way the, the processes are with the finances and things like that. And we'll continue to improve on these things to give you more data because you need to make database decisions. And I think we're going in the right trajectory.
Well, I know we're going to be talking about, um, it's in here, potential revenue sources and we're, you know, my email box has been full, you know, about a one cent sales tax. But the reality of it, a one cent sales tax is about 27% of it is paid by people that don't even live in this county. So, you know, I look at it and they, do I think that we need a complete reform of the way we budget? I do. I think fees for services, I think ad valorem is probably the most unfair taxing that there is. Um, so many people are getting exemptions on it today that, you know, we're not collecting a dollar from everybody. You know, the people that are getting exempted out of it, the other people are paying more and the burden is really being shouldered by your commercial. And when we talk about salaries and people having living wages in a place to live, if we keep taxing them, they can't give higher wages to employees. Therefore, employees can't afford the rent and the story just goes on and on. So I, you know, we, there's a balance to all of this. And I um, I really hope that as we enter into this budget cycle, that we're looking to the future and how we're going to do this. And I can tell you, I fully anticipate, it's already been said. I think the legislature is going to go for further homestead exemptions. And um, they're, you know, they even talked about last year in the, at the end of the session about the possibility of doing away with ad valorem taxes. Um, so what, how does that leave local governments funding services to the very people that live in the community? Again, this is why local government matters. It's the government that is closest to the people and it delivers all the services to you every day. So pay attention, what happens in Tallahassee and what happens in Washington DC has a direct impact right here. So we, I, we need your support as citizens to help us make good, sound decisions for you. Okay, I'm on, I'm done.
Um, so just so you know, some of the things that we have done is we took the metro forecasting information and we've provided that to PFM, who's doing the five-year financial analysis. Um, so they are going to use some of that data to have a more accurate analysis for the next five years. So we're not going to be using two different sets of figures of population and growth and all of that. Um, as far as um like road resurfacing MSBU, that was one of the options that was brought up um about a year and a half ago. Mont McDonald is currently doing the pavement management um assessment. And so when that information is available, it was determined that will be brought back to the board, obviously. And then to see if the board would like to go ahead and again, go to Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson and ask them to do the review that they had discussed to see what it would look like to do a road resurfacing MSBU for residential roads and those collector roads. Um, last year, the board obviously discussed the law enforcement MSTU. That resolution passed, but as of right now, there's no millage attached to that. So as you said, there are options available, um, you know, to change that up as far as it being strictly ad valorem. It's just, I think right now we're gathering that information to make sure before we do that, you know, what will that really look like and how will that really impact the citizens and the board as far as, you know, when we're getting those tax dollars? Um, like you said, there are definitely several bills out there. We discussed it the other day, that could severely impact the board and how you generate funding. And that doesn't even account for all the state mandates that you are required to fund, let alone projects, staffing, um, and just general operations. So it is a lot. Um, and especially with road resurfacing, I know we're going to come back to you the first meeting in March and we're going to ask you for budget guidance, um, as we do every year. And we're going to ask what the priorities are. Um, we've already started phase one of budgeting. There was 101 requests for new positions and reclassifications. And so I can just tell you right there, it's, we've just started and it's, it's already pretty overwhelming with the requests. So, um, you know, we can talk about that a little bit more when we come back in March. Um, the last slide, or the second to last slide does talk about potential revenue sources. There was a 1% sales tax discussed. Um, with that anticipated 25 million per year that would be generated. If all of that was used um for some type of ad valorem funded projects, it may result in a millage reduction currently of 1.6725 mils. Um, there's Duke funding, the annual transfer is approximately 2.1 million dollars per year. There was some funding remaining from CARES that the county was reimbursed. Um, these funds are currently allocated to various economic development projects. The board obviously has reserves contingency. You will see the true up, true down in April after the financial statements are complete. Um, and then obviously you could look to bonding as the board has discussed. We just said $20 million over 20 years. What would that look like? It would be approximately 1.5 million per year um in debt service. Um, we could put together multiple projects to go out to bond. It wouldn't just have to be one. And that's however the board wants to do that. The last slide is just a brief discussion. Um, it was previously mentioned about possibly asking NGN to review some of the projects we had on this list um to see if they would be covered under that 1% sales tax eligibility. Obviously, it'd be a few years um before that 1% sales tax came into play and started providing funding. Um, I don't know that many of these projects would still be around, but if there is a particular project you would like us to send over to ask that question or later on down the line, um, after you discuss it more, if there is a project or projects you would like to consult with them to make sure it would be covered under that 1%, um, we can do that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate a position that I, that I've stated before. I do not believe that the uh, the projects for this one cent sales tax uh initiative should come from the board, should come from the government. The projects have to come from the community. This is what we want. This is what we want you to do. And if you, if you commit to doing these projects, then we'll go and vote for the sales tax. If it goes the other way, if it comes from government to the people, they've been down that road before and they're not going to buy it. It's dead on arrival November 20, November 26. But using, using a, a, an outside agency, a local group uh to find out, to work those focus groups, to find out what projects the community would support, let them do that work first, put it together, come to us. And then we've got a list to say, all right, this is what the community wants. And then it's up to this board, I think, to pass a resolution that if this one cent sales tax passes, these are marching orders. This is exactly where the money's going. And at that point, our only role is, is to vote to put it on the ballot. Uh, again, if it goes the other way around, I think it's dead on arrival.
Madam Chair.
People un- understandably don't trust government. And I get it.
Commissioner Davis.
100% agree, Commissioner Kennard. It's, um, we absolutely have to ask folks what they're willing to do a one cent sales tax for. And if we get ahead of, it's, it is cart before the horse. Actually, those are the words I was going to say, but then you ended with it. So anyway, well said.
I don't disagree. I just think people have to be educated though. And when, when we talk about 8.9302 mils is what it is. If I tell you that one mil is equivalent to about 15 million dollars. So if I go just to our constitutional officers, that's almost what, four mils? That's four mils to cover all your constitutional officers. So understanding how that works, um, to me is very important when you're talking about millage and how you're going to reduce your millage and offsetting that with a one cent sales tax. I'm done. Don't look at me.
I don't know, I'm just, any other questions?
Board? All right. Onto um H2, our 115 presentation, we're not late. Elevate Florida Flood Mitigation Program.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Michelle Alford, Housing Services Director. Um, I'm here, I'm going to give you a brief overview on the Elevate Florida program, which is great news for our county. The application portal just opened this past Friday. So Elevate Florida, this is a grant-funded course share program that is structured around the traditional flood mitigation, flood mitigation assistance program. It is funded by FEMA and administered by the Florida Division of Emergency Services. Something really important to mention, and I don't think a lot of people know this, this is a first-time pilot program. This is the first year doing it and they are really excited to get this moving. Um, this program basically takes the burden off of local government and it helps expedite the application and construction processes for our residents. So we all know, obviously, due to the quantity and severity of our storms in the last couple of years, we originally said 24, but it's a couple of years. Um, we have received overwhelming um response from our homeowners wanting to mitigate their properties. This program is expected to expedite the processes and homeowners will be able to apply directly through FDM, the Florida Division of Emergency Management, and they don't have to go through the county. So it takes away that additional layer. Um, typical constraints are eliminated, allowing the residents to receive funding. So with us doing it, we would have been going right, you know, through FDM and FEMA. So that whole process has been eliminated. Um, this program is one time only. We're hoping it continues, but right now it is um expected to be one time only. And as mentioned, we have received overwhelming response from our residents. We are anticipating about 100, at this time, 143 residents will be applying. We checked as of yesterday at 2 o'clock, we saw 48 applications have been submitted. We are hopeful we'll see that number double or more by tomorrow. We have a, a meeting um with, with FDM and we are hoping that number will change. And obviously, this is good news for us, for local government. That would have been a huge push for us to try to handle that many applications to go through this process. So we are really happy. Um, sorry, there we go. So um Elevate Florida, the difference between the FMA and this program. So FMA, the traditional program, there's only 120 million dollars in that program. That is a national competitive program. With Elevate Florida, it's Florida-specific. They're putting aside 400 million dollars just for the state of Florida, which is amazing. Um, application processes are obviously going directly through FDM timeline. When a local government administers a flood mitigation assistance program, once the application is approved, which takes a while, it could be up to 36 months to get those projects completed. With the Elevate Florida, it's anticipated to be 18 months from application to completion. And that's what they're saying. So we're going to be, we're hopeful to see that process go through that way. One really important thing, and I know we mentioned it when we did the um, the FMA presentation, is the National Flood Insurance. With FMA, all families must have had the national With FMA, all families must have had the National Flood Insurance Program insurance at time of application. That is not necessary with the Elevate Florida. They only need to have this insurance in place once they get time to move into the home. And obviously, they would need, same as the traditional, it would have to stay insured through the NFIP program for the lifetime of the structure. Eligibility to apply, which is great, with FMA, they would have to be categorized as severe repetitive flood loss or repetitive flood loss. With this program, the home just has to be in the special flood hazard area. So, that is, it will definitely give a wider scope of families that will be able to apply. It creates a better chance of project approval, and it's, again, they don't have to get insurance until they get ready to apply for their CO, their Certificate of Occupancy. So, with this program, so for home elevations, traditionally, in most cases, we'll see a 75-25% cost share requirement, so out-of-pocket costs will normally be 25% for families. However, they are, they do have an ability to get 100%, it's basically based on the severity of the flood loss to their property. With home elevation, there is no funding cap, so they could potentially get up to 100% covered through this program. With the mitigation reconstruction, it is capped at 200, that would be demo reconstruction elevation, it is capped at $220,000 for labor and materials. There will be additional funding available, though, for permitting and engineering. So, ranking, which is kind of important, projects will be ranked according to the flood loss history, whether it is severe repetitive flood loss, repetitive flood loss, all projects are going to undergo a structural integrity assessment and a benefit cost analysis, just to make sure that the project is financially feasible to proceed with. So, that's going to be a really big deal. Another really important thing to point out is structures may not exceed 10%, they cannot be 10% larger than the original structure. So, that's something that will be reviewed. One thing that we just have never had the ability is we don't work directly in getting SBA loans. So, the families going through this program, they will be, they'll have a case manager that will help them through the program, and also help them secure an SBA loan if needed to help with their cost share of the property. Also, direct housing assistance. So, right now, we know FDM is here helping with this direct housing assistance program, these families will be able to help go through that program with their case managers. So, how to apply? Families need to sign up at disaster, flood, florida-disaster.org. Again, applications opened on Friday. Even though FDM is the managing agency, we just want everyone to know that we do have county staff on hand that will help our citizens navigate the process and definitely get the best experience out of this program, so. That is the whole overview.
Thank you.
You always give such great information.
Okay.
Any questions? Board members?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Michelle, I know that the county had already taken in or assisted with so many applications for the federal FMA grant program. Were those the 43, or do you still have a bunch of applications that we need to put in there for this Elevate Florida?
So, we have about 143 applications, yes. That's when I would say the push for us to be able to handle that magnitude of applications would have been really difficult on a local level, but Marina Edwards, our housing grant mitigation specialist, is working with all these families. They all are aware of, you know, we've gone over the difference in the programs, and we are working with them to get them over to that process. Anybody needing assistance to submit those applications, we will be doing that.
This is such a golden opportunity to get millions, tens of millions of dollars into our community to elevate these homes. We just need to get word out to people to apply for this program.
Absolutely, and it is important that anybody wanting to elevate, they need to go through this program now.
Yeah.
And so, we do need to get the word out. We have done the best, we've put it out on social medias, we do outreach, but this is the time now, anyone wanting to elevate, they need to get their application and to do so.
We had, one of the things that I thought was also interesting with this, I've got a neighbor who initially was not going to apply for the FMA program, he said that he didn't have flood insurance on his house. And so, it's nice to hear that this program doesn't require that they previously had it, it only has to be in place by the time they occupy the dwelling, is that right?
Exactly, and that's something we just learned about, and there is one case, though, that Marina did find out, is LLCs. So, if you have an LLC, you're not going to be eligible for Elevate Florida. So, those folks will need to go through the FMA, but as soon as, we did have a few on hand that were LLCs, and they're doing their best to try to not be, so they can take advantage of this opportunity. But, everyone does have to know, we will assist those families with FMA through the process, and in the future, we'll do our best to help families as well.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does that apply to people that also have their house in their trust?
Actually, I do not believe.
Trust is kind of mine.
Okay. Alright.
Thank you.
Very good.
Commissioner Finnegan?
I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm going to say this because I don't know if the whole board knows, that you have quite the reputation, not only in our county, but in the state of Florida, that nobody can find housing like Michelle Alfred. Nobody does it like Michelle Alfred. So, if you all don't know the reputation and the person that we have working for us, you have done an amazing job, and thank you. I know I've sent a lot of people your way, especially after the hurricanes, and you were so gracious, and just took care of every one of them.
Well, I appreciate it, I couldn't do it without my team, so.
Thank you to the team.
Thank you.
Team is amazing. I never used to like this whole division, but, no, I love them.
Thank you for liking us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we're making up time. Now, we're on to H3, Platt Vacation PV-2024-00003. Huchrow?
I'm not sure if he's here, if Mr. Huch, I don't know how to say it either, Huchrow, I've only dealt with phone and email. Is he in the audience?
There he is, okay. It is so hard to follow Housing Services, I agree, they do a tremendous job on this.
You don't have to speak.
How bad, how bad did we butcher your name?
Huckrow.
Huckrow, okay.
You want to speak or no, it's up to you, you can wait for questions if you like.
Yeah, first question, I will.
So, he's available if there's any questions, so I'll go ahead and proceed. So, this is an application to vacate a 7.5-foot drainage and utility easement, actually two of them on side-by-side lots in Crystal Manor Unit 2. There we go. Alright, this is where it is, you cannot tell, there's drainage and utility easement here. This was a time in our development of the county when they put drainage and utility easements along the side lot lines of every plat that came in, this is one of them in Crystal Manor. So, it's not drawn on here, those individual easements, but they are on every single lot, so this particular applicant owns these, two of these lots, and those easements are in the way if they want to try to develop in the middle there. This is looking on the road, again, you cannot see any drainage or utility easements on either side, but I tell you, they are there on paper. And again, the other way in the road, this particular area is not very highly developed, there are some scattered houses. And again, this is looking at the site, I am not sure this is exactly where the utility easement is supposed to be, but it is on paper. Staff have reviewed this and had no concerns, your engineering technical services reviewed this and had no prospect for drainage in this particular easement. Utility companies have provided letters, and they have no concern, so staff is recommending approval.
Board members, you have any questions of staff? Do you have any questions of Mr. Huckrow? Don't we make a motion first and then open? Okay. We're opening it up to public for comment. Anybody wishing to make any public comment? We're closing public comment.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Finnegan?
I will make a motion to approve Platt Vacation PV-2024-00003 Huckrow.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Canard. Is there any further comment? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0, thank you. Next on our agenda is a public hearing, Northwest Quadrant Water Main Assessment Correction.
Good afternoon, Chair, Board members, Ken Cheek, Water Resources Director. Again, the purpose of this project today is just to amend the assessment that was put in place by the board back in July of last year for the Northwest Quadrant Water Main Project. You'll recall the project was implemented in conjunction with the Restore Act project for sewer. The board, at the time the Restore Act project was being considered, instructed staff and the county administrator at the time to move forward with water concurrently with the sewer project. The intent there is basically to promote economic development throughout the corridor. The board felt that sewer alone was not going to do that, so they wanted to have water done concurrent with that. There was discussion at the time that it would require a water main assessment, and the board instructed staff and the administrator at the time to move forward with that. So, we did, I think it was, I tried to remember when this project, it's so long ago, it was actually put in the CIP in 2015. So, we've been working on this project all along. Now, in around 2019, we were getting to the point where we were ready to move forward with the project. Fortunately, there was ARPA funds that came available then, so this project was one of the first ones that went on the ARPA-funded list. We did add it to that, we put about 4.2 million dollars north of that a little bit into the project, which constitutes about 85% of the funding. So, the rest was then implemented with the assessment back last July. The project finished in 2023, so the July assessment was for this year's assessment. Now, since that assessment went in place, we have noticed a couple, we were made aware of some problems with some of the properties that were included in it, I'll run down those for you, but we need to get those corrected, and that's the purpose here today. Now, one of them was actually connected to the hospital system up on the north end of the project. Obviously, if they're connected to another public water system, we can't assess them for that same service, so that one was actually eliminated from the assessment. Three of them, when we assessed them originally, they were assessed as unplanted vacant property. Turns out, there was some low intensity development on the property we were made aware of, so we recalculated the assessments based on the existing development. That resulted in a reduction in the assessment for all of those, so that's part of this. Four of the parcels, and it's a total of 10 that are included, four of the parcels, we actually had the incorrect geometry on the property, so that affected the calculation of the assessment for those properties. We recalculated them, they actually either had the same assessment or a reduction in the assessment, so those properties all were adjusted for this, too. And finally, there was a property that was originally, when we did our research, we showed it as under joint family ownership for 13 assessment units. Subsequently, we learned that it had been divided among the property, or the family members, into four parcels, so we're adjusting the assessment based on the four parcels that have been divided. Now, that reduced the assessment on total for the property from 13 to 11, but the way it breaks up between the properties, one of the properties had an existing home on it, so existing development, they get one assessment, and the other three were done based on the unplatted vacant property assessment formula, so they got assessments of 3, 3, and 4. So, we did get comments from those folks, and I think the letter that you guys had in your backup, and I believe they're here today, we had two very good meetings with them, very respectful, enjoyed talking to them. Unfortunately, I don't think I was able to answer their questions to their satisfaction. In particular, one of the questions they asked was, you know, how did this project get implemented without us getting a chance to comment on it before it ever started? And my answer to that was, it was really a board-directed. Through that discussion, the board actually had us put it in the CIP, you know, occasionally, and not always, but certainly frequently, when we have requests for water and sewer service, we will, especially if it comes from a citizen-initiated thing, will possibly do a petition, we may go as far as having town hall meetings. In this case, we did not do that. The board basically directed us, just economic development is the purpose for this project, we want to move forward with it. You have the authority to do that, so, you know, you don't have to do public outreach, a lot of times we do, in this case, we did not. The second issue that they had, on the parcel, I believe the one that has the four assessment units on it, the larger parcel, they had a map that showed that they had done some wetland surveys on the property, and there were wetlands on there, and that, I believe, they said in the meeting that that was one of the reasons why that property owner got more property. Now, the way we do unplanted vacant land assessments, and it was adopted, when we adopted the utility availability assessment, it was vetted by our outside counsel, Heather Ensignosa, I think you all are familiar with her, it's strictly based on the property geometry. We do not look at development potential on the property when we do that. Certainly, wetlands can, you know, limit development on the property, but if we were going to look at that on one parcel, to be fair for the entire assessment, we'd have to do that type of analysis on every parcel. And then, where do you draw the line, if you're looking at wetlands, are we going to look at floodplain, are we going to look at roadway access, are we going to look at gopher tortoises, you know, there's a lot of issues that could be considered for, you guys have seen what the developer for Beth's Farm is doing to vet the potential development on there. So, I don't believe from, and I'm not trying to address legal issues, but I think there would be a lot of issues and a lot of potential for challenge to the assessment if we were to start to look at that type of analysis. Certainly, it would paralyze us for the time it would take to do that. So, we have adopted that process for doing unplanted vacant property, and we have applied that to every assessment since it was adopted. Now, full disclosure, when we do in platted areas, like Citrus Springs, we do a lot of waterline projects up there, those are all platted for one house. So, we just add up the total cost of the project, divide by the number of lots that can be served, and that's the per-lot assessment. In that case, there is no reason to look at development potential because they all have already been established in that way. So, basically, that's it for this staff summary, I'll be happy to answer questions, but what we're asking is that you hold a public hearing, and then hopefully consider the resolution to resolve these issues.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to the public at this time. Anyone wishing to address the board, please fill out a green sheet, say your first name and your address, or your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Kwame Chisholm. My name is Kwame Chisholm, I am here today on behalf of my mother, Catherine Chisholm, Catherine Chisholm Hopkins. She is, who lives in New York, who is one of the owners of the property that is being assessed. I thank for this property to address our concerns regarding easement to the cost connected to the water system. In July of 2024, my mom and my aunt received a letter, assessment, and it was the first notification that water lines had been laid on the edge of US 19. The total estimated, the total estimated assessment was 69,000, of which the Board of County Commissioners voted all, all the way back during the BP oil spill, but never noticed the residents. Since my grandparents' ownership of the land over 90 years, they have always and are still dependent on well water and are previously deemed across, I mean, were previously deemed access to county water when the, oh my goodness, well water, and were previously deemed access to county water when the day, Days Inn was built next door in 1985. My grandparents originally owned 40 acres of land, however, when the new US 19- However, when the new US 19 was built, 10 acres were taken from them cited as eminent domain, resulting in what is left with approximately 30 acres of land, causing their land to be frontage to US 19, of which only residents that have frontage to US 19 are being assessed for the water line. On the 30 acres of land, one house exists. The remaining acreage was used for cattle, bulls, horses, and okra. After both of my grandparents passed away, the agricultural and livestock were sold off, leaving just vacant land and the house. As of July of 2024, they have been informed that the house has 365 days to comply with hooking up to county water or be fined, and the only usage allowed for the current well is for irrigation. The biggest issue is the remaining vacant land is being assessed fees based upon county's estimated calculations of what can be built in the future, although there has not been any permits pulled for future homes or dwellings. Based on county assessment, every half acre is one house built, and each house is assessed $3,000. Therefore, they have said on one side of US 19, 13 houses can be built, and on the other side of US 19, 10 houses can be built, totaling 23 houses at $3,000 apiece. 23 times 3,000 is $69,000. With the reigning, that assessment, what? We believe that the assessment needs to be modified and corrected based upon historical activities by the, by the county commissioner to be land and, what? To be. And the failure to communicate with the land assessment.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Kay Hopkins Thompson. I'm here today, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you, to share our concerns about what you as the board have chosen to do, especially since you failed to communicate with us, the homeowners, from a period of 2015 to 2024. You've never communicated with us until July 24. At that time, you were telling us that we were going to be assessed. You are violating, based on what my research has shown, is that you are violating several ordinance or directives. You, there's the Administrative Code 1110. There's the Citrus County Code, Chapter 86. There's the Florida Statute 197.3632. Florida Statute 286.015. Most of that directs your actions to make homeowners affected by your action to make them aware of what you're doing. You failed to do that. Specifically, as I mentioned, you never told us about this assessment until July 2024. You said we need to get connected within 365 days. The guidelines for you says that you need to personally notify by mail or publication homeowners of the proposed assessment. You did neither one of those before you moved forward with your assessment. My concern so is that you did not make a diligent effort to notify us. As while we don't live in the county, we pay taxes in this county. My parents paid taxes. My father was a veteran. He worked hard to serve this county, did many things to progress this county. You failed to treat us appropriately and want to charge us 69,000 beginning effective 2025.
Madam and the board, my name is Aurelia Parker. I'm one of the siblings, Oscar and Hazel Hopkins, and I own the property on Highway 19 as well. Once it was divided, there was objected to how they deaded. On one side, we have more wetlands and upland. And like you said, there was more wetlands that we not supposed to have to disturb, and they are charging X amount of money for wetland, which is not billable for us to bill on. And only half of the area is like six acres, and only half of it, I can only put a home there. So my objection was if they didn't, when they did the tax assessment, I don't think they considered the wetland in as a part of not to disturb the wetland. So my come to you if you can have them to go back to recalculate due to the wetland. A lot of it is not billable on the east side and the west side. So my concern is for the possible to go back and recalculate it due to the tax assessment. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is, my name is Betty Beeler, and I too am one of the homeowners of 4689 and 4690 Sun Coast Boulevard in Crystal River. My issue is that the lack of time given us by the Board of County Commissioners to come to the meeting. As she stated, we got a, we were not notified until July of 2024. That one of the examples is we got a letter dated July the 2nd, and the meeting would be held July the 23rd, which is less than the 20 days that we had to respond. We were given, the letter was addressed to the wrong landlord, landowner, and also the incorrect ALT key was on there. And along with that, even the physical address was incorrect. And these errors have caused us not only not being able to come to the meeting, not being able to respond, and the opportunity to object to the assessments that are imposed, especially on 4689 North Sun Coast Boulevard. Again, these have caused confusion and unexpected expenses. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Kintaya Beeler. I am the granddaughter of Oscar and Hazel Hopkins and the daughter of Betty Beeler. So before me, you've heard my aunts and my cousin talk about all of the issues. One, errors on late correspondences, which included wrong addresses, incorrect ALT keys, and incorrect names of owners. In addition to the letters that are sent out by land development, there was incorrect information about ERUs and incorrect amounts per ERU. Next, estimates on the Excel spreadsheet that you use to estimate the actual ERUs is inaccurate because it does not consider Citrus County's building codes, which require setbacks as well as wetlands. Next, eminent domain caused frontage to US 19, meaning that when my grandparents purchased the property, it did not have the same land access to a road. So we now are being double penalized. One, because you did eminent domain and created frontage, and now only residents that have frontage are being assessed, and you took 10 acres. Next, the usage in the past and current has never been multiple units for residential use, but as of now, one dwelling and agricultural usage. Therefore, for your ERU calculation is not accurate for our property. Next, commercial stands along US 19 have an opportunity to recover their costs, and you just cited this decision was made based on economic development. However, we just have residential properties, and we do not look to make economic development at this point. Next, when the BP oil spill occurred and the funding for the water lines were not inclusive, any of the Board of Commissioners could have decided to be inclusive of us before they moved forward with the financing of the residents. Okay? And so now we're being imposed, we are also being charged interest if you do not pay the entire 69,000 in advance. We were not privy to bids from contractors or the interest that you took on the loans, and therefore, the financing of it had no consideration of us. Earlier in this meeting, you acknowledged and celebrated and made a proclamation to Black History Month in Citrus County. Be it known that my grandfather, Oscar Henry Hopkins, discovered the Indian mound and artifacts that Citrus County currently has deemed a historic site and gets revenue from that. This would be a great disservice to our grandfather, who too is a World War II veteran. When he returned home, he actually had income from that and bought this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon to the board. My name is Pastor Al Hopkins. I am a longtime resident here of Crystal River, Florida. This is pretty much my family property, much of which we all grew up there. As you know, these are my aunts. Many of them don't live in the county anymore. I do, I do understand there's a lot of development going on in Citrus County, which is affecting a lot of the residents in Citrus County. This is definitely a request to the board to consider modifying this assessment because it is a great degree. There is only one home that exists on this particular property, and considering the history and definitely investment that my grandparents have made in this community, I'm requesting that you guys consider that as you make this modification. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board? Seeing none, I'll close open to the public.
I'm looking at the backup. I'm not seeing 69,000 or whatever the number is on any of these.
The modifications here are just for one of the parcels. They actually own property on the opposite side of 19 also, that there was no need to modify. That was correctly noticed and correctly calculated. So they, they're probably adding the two together.
Okay.
And I don't think they acknowledged that the assessment went down in the current calculation too by two assessment units. Originally, it was 69. I think it's a little less than that now.
And so the assessment, they can put that on their tax bill and pay it over?
10 years.
10 years?
Board members? I'm trying, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I thought I had it, and I don't have it, and I think you and I must have been on the same page with the confusion because you were saying it changed from 13,000 to 11,000, but then some?
13 assessment units to 11 assessment units.
All right. And you're doing that per acre?
So the formula we use for vacant property, again, is the one that we use for the availability assessment. We, this is what it's based on. So it's a 200-foot depth on the property. That's based on the depth that we deem you can actually use a normal water surface for. If you go further in the property than 200 feet, you may have to put a bigger water line in, you may have to upsize the meter. So 200 feet is kind of the limit for a normal water surface times the width of the property, divided by half acre, which is the average lot size in Citrus County per GIS. So the depth is based on typical water surface. The width is whatever the width of the property is geometrically, and the division by half an acre is the average lot size for a residential lot in Citrus County.
But the people that spoke, they don't have half acres, they have large plots, right?
Right, so you take that total area and divide it by a half acre, and that says how many assessment units you get because we're equating it to a single residential lot.
And they were saying 69,000, is that per each person that got up here and spoke?
That's the total for all the property.
So how, how much per, do you have this per homeowner?
I only have the assessment units, I don't have the, the actual dollar amount, but it's, originally, it was limited at $3,000 per assessment unit. So for four, it would be 12,000. With the changes, that will be divided into nine years instead of 10. So if they haven't already paid the first year's assessment, so I can't do that math off the top of my head. It would be $3,333.33 per assessment unit.
Ma'am, I think it's page 1263.
Oh, two pages away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I believe.
Well, there's three.
That, that's the page to be added, the next page is to be removed. It's very confusing. I, I can't take open to the public anymore.
Can somebody get with her and find out what her question is?
Do you want this, Ken?
No, I got it.
Okay.
My backup. And that's correct. So what we're showing here is the property that they own on 1263.
What about? Looking at, there's something on 1265 because Commissioner Bayes gave me some other.
1265 are going to be removed. Remember, you're fixing, you're correcting the previous assessment, so. Appendix B is to be removed. And Appendix C.
So B is being removed?
Yes, ma'am. Because what happened was the $39,000 parcel was split between the time that you did the initial, initial assessment and now.
What about Appendix A?
Appendix A is the new assessment that you're setting. So it would be 9,000, 9,000, 3,000, 12,000, and 3,000.
Mr. Cheek? If I'm looking correctly at Appendix A, the one person's assessment is 132321 for three ERUs?
That's the annual, annual assessment, yeah.
Yeah, the annual, oh, it's 9,000 per year.
9,000 total.
Oh, not yet, that's what I'm saying. So, so the annual is the 1323.
Correct.
So that's what would be put on their tax bill.
Correct.
Okay, so the most is the one that has the four units, which would be the 1,700.
Correct.
That would be on top of their normal property taxes for that piece of property. But this would entitle the owner of that property to have water in front of their house or in front of their property, and then they need to connect to it.
The larger assessment is just based on the fact that they have a larger frontage on 19.
Okay. But what I'm, what I'm saying is this brings the water to the property.
Correct.
And then they still have to connect with, they have 365 days to get with whomever to connect to it.
Yeah, and the only parcel that they have that is subject to that is the one that has the house on it.
Okay. Then I understood.
I'm sorry, that just opened up another question for me. So the only one with the house has to connect in 365 days, the other ones?
No, they, they would only connect when they build something.
But they also have to pay the assessments within 365 days.
Correct, that's for the, the water line being in front of their property, but the 365-day mandatory connection only applies if you have existing development.
I mean, you know how I feel about things similar to this, yes, and, and this.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
Can we get an explanation of the, the eminent domain process that gave them frontage where they previously didn't have frontage? I didn't quite understand.
Having done eminent domain before, I can give you a guess. I don't, I don't know the circumstance of that, and it would have been DOT. You know, 19's a DOT road. So, DOT, when they widened the road at some point, may have acquired property from them and typically compensated them. And if, if their property sat off the road, and then when DOT acquired, it impacted the property to where they got more frontage because of that. That's a possibility. Sounds like that's what happened, but, you know, I don't have any direct knowledge of it for sure.
But they, can I continue?
Yes, sir.
They always had frontage, right? It's just a matter of how much frontage maybe they had, or we don't really know.
I, I don't know what the configuration of the property was before DOT acquired from them.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And they would have been paid for the eminent domain.
And, you know, that section of 19 was, well, a long, long time ago. Certainly before I can remember. And as long as they've owned the property, you know, it may have been the old configuration of 19 for all we know.
So, this is really no different than any other utility system when we hook up and we provide this.
We, we've used our standard assessment methodology for this one that we use for every other project. And, you know, unfortunately, somebody gets affected in a way that they don't want pretty much every time we do one of these. I'd love to have an assessment where everybody was happy, but I haven't been able to corral that unicorn yet.
And, um, them not, so this came about in 2015? And we're just now catching up to it?
No, no, no. The project was actually added to the CIP when the Restore Act project was put in the CIP, and that was in 2015. We had quite a long time negotiating and working with the state to get the Restore Act funds approved. So, I mean, most of that timeframe that we're talking about, between 2015 and 2020, when this project was actually put out to bid, were just getting the Restore Act money in place. Remember, we were on the list for a long time, just waiting for the money to actually get available.
But how did they get left out of the communication?
Well, kind of as I said in the opening, the board at that time basically directed us to do this project. There, we were not, it, it wasn't a citizen-initiated project like others that we do. So, it was added to the CIP directly on board direction. So, you know, we didn't do a lot of public outreach.
All right, board members. Looking for a motion. Don't all go at once.
So, we would just be making a motion to approve H4, V and C? Is that correct? I mean, I hate the size of the assessment. When they own a lot of property, the assessment's going to be big.
All right, I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Kennard.
Second.
And I have a second by Commissioner Barrick. Is there any further public comment?
No, no more. Ma'am, you've already done the public hearing.
All right, never mind.
I'm not sure who said that, but you're.
Well, they were misinformed.
Okay, ma'am, I'm sorry.
You can't speak from the audience. So, there's, pardon me?
Whenever you want, board comment.
Please, go right ahead.
Hopkins' family is very important to this county. I went to school with some of your family in Chris River High School, and we, we honor all of the contributions that you've made to the county. I don't believe any of us, one of us is recycled on the board. She was here a long time ago. But I don't, I don't think any of us were on the board when this originally came about. So, I had a little heart-to-heart with staff that they basically said this is a bit of a one-off, like normally we do. We're very good about, in, you know, getting with folks and, and making sure they're properly noticed. So, I would always want to make sure whenever I'm on the board that that does happen. I also love ag land. I love historic family properties. And I'm sorry, 19 mowed a path right through your historic land. On the upside, you're sitting on property that can, is probably going to be worth an awful lot of money now that it's got utilities and commerce, and if you flip it to commercial. I'm just, I'm just looking for the bright side, because government moves the way government moves. But again, I, I honor your family and what you've done for the county. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there any other board discussion?
Madam Chair, please forgive me. When we walk through that door, we're supposed to be able to hear everything. And I've told somebody, you cannot hear. So, I thought I might have heard a motion, but I don't know.
There is a motion by Commissioner Kennard and a second by Commissioner Barrick.
To approve.
And maybe Kat can turn the volume up?
I think Miles was taking.
Or Miles, okay, thank you.
I would agree with Commissioner Davis's. These are always tough. We have another gentleman in the office, in the audience today on Cambridge Greens. No one likes these, but we're, with the state and BMAP and, and the things that are required, we really don't have an option. So, it's unfortunate that they cost money, but as Commissioner Davis said, it does provide value to the land ultimately. If there's no more comment by the board, then I'm going to call. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Open to the public. Anybody wishing to address the board, please come forward. Please make sure you fill out a green card. You will have three minutes unless you have, you're registered and filed to speak five minutes. And please state, state your name and your address.
I put mine in there, yeah, absolutely. All right, so my name is Alexander Alt. I am here with the Realtors Association of Citrus County. I am also the chairman of the Legislative and Key Contact Committee, and I'm joined today with our association president Lynn Harris and one of our board members as well, Kathy Holbrook. So, we are here today because with the induction of the new board, this is at the beginning of this year, there was a lot of discussion about being more proactive with our association with local government and state government of what's going on and how it impacts Realtors in the real estate business. And with that, after our first committee meeting, we decided to have a letter read to the Board of County Commissioners and put into the record. So, with that, I wanted to quickly read that to you all. So, dear Chairwoman Baze and County Commissioners, this letter serves to formally introduce the Legislative and Key Contact Committee for the Realtors Association of Citrus County to the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. While our committee has existed in previous iterations in the past, our new association leadership, again, Lynn Harris, and the board have decided to take a more proactive approach in local government. Not only are we working to keep our membership more, better informed of many of the critical issues coming before the BOCC, we also hope to be a resource to all of you as you gather information about the variety of topics that may arise on your agenda. The real estate professionals on the committee, of which I am serving as chairman, will be working in a variety of capacities. We will be, one, monitoring and analyzing proposed legislation at the state and local level; two, advocating for the interests of property owners and real estate professionals; three, educating our members in the community on legislative developments that may have an impact on the Citrus County market; and four, collaborating with all of you on issues related to real estate, property rights, zoning, property taxes, and many other relevant issues. It is our belief that the committee will play a vital role in ensuring the voices of our property owners and real estate professionals are heard in the process. As we move forward, we are committed to collaborating with the Board of County Commissioners as well as providing input, expertise, and expertise on any real estate and property rights issues. Thank you for your time this afternoon. I know we went a little late before we got to public testimony, and we had, we did have two other members that were here. They had to leave because they had previous engagements. But again, thank you for your time. As we move forward, we are committed to collaborating with the Board of County Commissioners as we're providing, providing input and expertise on any real estate or property rights issues. We are looking forward to a productive and collaborative relationship with the Board of County Commissioners. Please let us know if you have any questions or concerns. We're here to help. We put our contact information on the letter. I have some copies for all of you. I can, I don't know if I can submit to the, to the record to the clerk here. If, again, if you have any questions, please let us know. We intend to, if anything comes up that impacts the Realtors Association, we intend to be here to provide feedback to you if you have any questions and, and let our voice be heard. So, thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate you taking the leadership and, and doing this. That's great.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. I'm Max Schulman. I'm from Inverness, Florida. And first, I want to start out by thanking you for what you did today. I know it isn't easy, and especially for those that were worried what veterans think. We love a good brawl. We get up, we get up from knocking each other down and, and go buy a drink. So, thank you for doing it in public. I know it's hard, but it helps a lot. And, and I will tell you, we know all of you were anxious to work the issue because you're passionate. All of you have your hearts in your right place, and, and process is always a problem when, as county, as Commissioner Davis pointed out, you can't talk. I, with my, my writing partner, Tom, have just, Tom Craig, have just finished a four-year research and writing project on the Cross Florida Barge Canal. I have spent certainly the last year and a half out in the field paddling, paddling. We've done every inch by paddle of the 31 miles from where the canal ends to, to Denellin and the 37 miles from Silver Spring to the confluence point in the St. Johns. And I have to tell you, it's 110 miles long. It's four counties. It is woven deeply into the fabric of the, of tourism in both Marion County and especially Putnam County, because unlike us where Lake Rousseau was already there, there's actually only 6.8 miles that we have control of both sides, and that's where the Withlacoochee pours back into the Barge Canal. A lot of people gave up land or promised jobs. It is the biggest boondoggle in the history of the United States. But we weren't hurt as badly as the people along the Silver River and the Aklewaha. So, there is a huge environmental issue that's being, that's really ranked high in the state over what to do about Rodman Dam, about what to do with, with the 70% of the folks in the area that want to take the dam out and what needs to be done environmentally. We don't want any part of that. So, so, thank you, sir. You're correct, there are issues that need to be worked. But the lemonade is, it gives us time to work better things. So, what I want to tell you is, since last night when I found out about this, I sat down and wrote out, first, I want to tell you, veterans do appreciate all you do for us. But the older you are, the more you appreciate things that are ceremonial. The young folks don't give a hootin' hell about it. They don't want ceremonial stuff. They want real stuff. So, don't bring us a renaming. Renamings don't mean anything. Look at the name on the, on Camp Izzard. That's a big part of our history, and that boat ramp is gone because we never did anything there. Make this into an American Freedom Canal Zone where we grow events. And I will send my comments to office, and I will work in our strategic plan to make, to show you the seven to 10 things we could do that will make it what it needs to be, a celebration of freedom.
Thank you. Next. Max? I think you need a green card. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Brian Snapp. I've been a resident here for 33 years. I've lived on the lake. I want to call your attention to a grave safety, growing safety issue on the lake. I live in Lockshire Park. There's a watershed island. It's 750 feet from my home, 500 feet from other homes. It's been an island that folks have used for 50, 60 years. Young folks have gone there to camp, folks to fish, day barbecues, whatever. In the last two or three weeks, a growing number of people have decided to use the island as a shooting range. The land is designated CLR, Coastal Land Residential. It's illegal in the state of Florida according to statute 790 to fire in a residential area. Shots are increasingly growing. Over the weekend, there were many. My wife and I cleaned up the property yesterday. I found all kinds of shell casings, shotgun shells, ammo boxes, shot-up glass tables, bottles, all kinds of stuff. It was a mess. You fought for a piece of property there next to it within 400 feet. That was the community boat land at Lockshire Park. There was a year lawsuit going on with that. They regained that property. I'm asking for somebody. I've spent today on the phone with the deputy sheriff, the sergeant, FWC, EPA, the property appraisers office, everybody. The property was deeded in '69 when the canals were built. It's inactive, and it's just sitting there. I'm asking that somebody can find some way to stop this before some boater or some homeowner gets shot.
All right.
I have all the information for all the property. I'll be happy to email anybody.
Veronica, can you step out with him and get the information or whatever he has? And then we'll look into it. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I was calling your office today, and they said you were having a meeting, so here I am.
I appreciate you being here.
I appreciate all that you guys do. You've got a lot of nerve accusing him of being political biased and pandering to a small crowd of people.
Sir, sir, please. State your name and your address, please.
Yes, sorry. My name is Demetrius Branca. I'm a dad from Tallahassee. I'm here to ask you to adopt a resolution that will save lives in your community and around the state. I'm a member of the Florida Hands Free Coalition, which is a group that consists of pedestrian activists, bicycle groups, law enforcement, insurance companies, and other concerned citizens, nonprofit and for-profit entities. And we are asking the state of Florida, the legislative body of the state of Florida, to pass a hands-free law which would compel drivers to put their cell phones down while they are driving. In the 31 other states and District of Columbia that have passed this law, there has been an immediate and measurable reduction in overall traffic fatalities by 20 to 25%. In the state of Florida, 3,000, over 3,000 people die every year on our roads in 20, excuse me, in 2024, it was 3,081 people. A quarter of that number we could save. Those are families that would not living, be living with the same traumatic life and, and pain and grief that I am, because my son Anthony, who is my best friend in the world, the greatest big brother I've ever seen, beloved by his teachers, his coaches, his bosses, was run over and killed by a man who knew better, but chose to drive distracted anyway. In 2024, along with Representative Tant from Tallahassee, I was able to usher a hands-free law through the House of Representatives. It met with unopposed bipartisan unanimous support in all three committee assignments. It went to the Senate where it promptly died in the first committee because one senator could not see past his own ego to understand that this is a life-saving measure. I recently, about two weeks ago, sent, sent you an email. I hope you all received it. It had the resolution language. I'd be glad to send it again or to anyone who needs it. And I'm asking you today to consider it. I know it's been a long day. I know it's been a kind of a contentious meeting. Can I? I travel all over the state. I've been to a bunch of different of these, and this one is so far my favorite.
Did you pack your popcorn?
It was, I mean, to be honest, this, this exercise of driving around to all the counties in the state of Florida and meeting commissioners and watching these meetings, it just, it renews my hope in America. It renews my hope in democracy, and today is another one of those examples. I'm just so thankful to be an American, so proud to be an American. And I, I too, serve my country. I, I tell people I've been serving my country since the day I was born. I was born in an Air Force hospital. I was born in an Air Force hospital in, in Puerto Rico. So, I just, I hope you'll consider it, and, and thank you for your time.
We appreciate you being here, and we're very sorry for your loss.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just want to ask a quick question. We had, well, thank you for being here. We had, what was it? 2018, maybe? We had a female representative come here. I know Commissioner Smith was sitting on the board at the time.
Was it Slossburg, Emily Slossburg?
Might have been. She came, she came here wanting us to pass a resolution to support a hands-free bill up in Tallahassee. And I don't recall if we did it or not, but I don't know whatever happened to her legislation.
So, Emily Slossburg is a, was a representative from down in the Miami area?
Yes, her sister, I believe.
Her sister was killed by, by, in a car wreck, in a terrible car wreck. And I've been active in the, in the, like, in this arena for a while, and it seems like there's a lot of people who've lost twins who become really active, and that makes a lot of sense to me because Anthony was my big brother, or my little brother, more of a brother to me, and I, I understand that, that compulsion. That bill that was passed in 2019 makes driving within a school zone hands-free. But for the rest of the streets, it focuses solely, and, and in my, in my opinion, to a fault on texting, on inputting the information. And in doing so, disregards the myriad of other distractions. It is currently not illegal in the state of Florida to watch Netflix while you're driving, or shop Amazon, or, you know, peruse your social media. That stuff is not illegal. What is illegal is inputting text into your phone. What I want to do is close the big giant loophole that is the current law and make it so that you have to put your phone down. You just can't use your phone while you're driving, and that's the, that's the bill.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Chris Peterson for Fortify Financial. We are pace provider here in the state of Florida. Here to speak on Item K. I was a bit surprised to see this item come up, honestly. The data that was provided and some of the commentary was inconsistent with the data that I have in my system. We don't have any unresolved issues, or really any calls barely about this program here in Citrus County. I was even further surprised to read the article, which references a, some rule that's coming out in March of 2026. For background, for the board's information here, that is a CFPB rule, which was recently halted by the Trump administration in their effort to abolish the CFPB and put this power back to the states where it belongs. And that rule was actually pushed by Maxine Waters in the first place. Very, very glad that that got, that got rolled back. The state has SB 770. It was passed last year, July 1st, 2024. It was enacted. That is a real law that is in effect. And besides the host of consumer protections and contractor fraud mitigation efforts that is in that bill, ability to pay, confirm term calls, et cetera, it actually gives home role, codifies that for this, for the county. So, we can have these discussions, and the county can, can decide how to, how to move forward and how to adjust this program to their, to their needs, right? It's a wonderful home role. We supported this. We were there, front and center, very much in support of the county's ability to do that. You know, I reached out a few times to try to understand better if there was a homeowner that was affected that needed some help. I didn't get any, any response from the commissioner. Seems like this is putting the cart in front of the horse. What I'm proposing is that we take a step back, table this item, and do a workshop or presentation. Let's go over all of the, the new consumer protections, all of the components of the SB 770 bill, and understand better what this program looks like from July 1st, 2024 on. That is what I'm suggesting, and I'm hoping that the commissioners can understand that this is an important program. Lots of folks need to use this. And the consumer protections that are in place now make this a much more friendly product for, for those that choose to use it. So, thank you very much for your time, and I'll, we'll be here to answer questions during that item.
Thank you very much for being here.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. What company is he with?
Fortify.
I have a question for him.
Oh, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
If you may. You referred to CFPB.
Correct.
Could you tell me what that is?
The Consumer Finance Protection Bureau.
Okay.
It is a federal-
Yes. Just so you can catch the acronym.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Rachel Hobbs, and I'm with Home Run Financing. We're one of the pace providers that's active here in Florida. And in your community, last year, we were able to help 26 of your homeowners and their families with important and essential upgrades to their homes. Again, I'm, I'm here because we saw the item on the agenda. We're hoping that we can have the opportunity to talk more about it, to give more information, particularly about SB 770 that passed last year. It was the law that came into effect July 1st, brought in a raft of consumer protections for residential pace providers, including confirmation of terms calls. It put the state auditor general as the regulator for the pace program in Florida. It requires us to do a lot more reporting for transparency. They're, they put into place an ability to pay recommendation as part of our underwriting to make sure that people are not going to be getting over their skis with this kind of financing. So, here today, ready for questions, Item K1, the pace item. Hoping that we could perhaps have a workshop or a situation where we could do a presentation, walk you through all the steps we take. We, we call, we do the telephone call that we're supposed to do by statute, the confirmed terms call. We also do a second call at the end of the project. My company, we do a third call if it's an elderly homeowner or a low-income homeowner. We offer everything in Spanish and English. We mail out all our documents at the end, you know, once everything's signed. So, there, there's really a lot to it, and we'd like the opportunity very much to be able to share that with you and give you some more ideas about that.
So, is the new legislation part of it? They must be current on property taxes for the last three years?
Yes, yes.
They must be current on their mortgage, not active in bankruptcy, no involuntary liens against property, a max funding of 20% of just value of the property, and the ability to pay test is required? Those are all, that's all part of the new legislation?
Yes, that's all in the new legislation, 770s.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Madam Chair, Mark Scheffel with Y Green Energy Fund Florida. I too am coming for you regarding Item K1 as one of the pace funders in your state. And again, just would encourage a dialogue on this, having this item pop up. Pace has been around in, in Florida for quite some time. The original enabling legislation was passed out of Tallahassee in 2010. Citrus County adopted it in 2018. And as was pointed out to you, there was a significant rewrite, about a 40-page bill done in 2024 on pace out of Tallahassee. The focus of all of that, frankly, dating back to the original legislation all the way to the major rewrite in 2024, frankly, your legislation 2018 has been to provide a powerful financing tool for a very limited number of improvements and focus on consumer education and consumer protection. That was the heart and soul of the 2024 Act SB 770, as it's been referred to. There's not a large program in, in your county. I know we did about 30 projects last year, well under 1,000 over the life of the program, I think about 500 or something. All the while, trying to provide a tool that's not for everybody, but is part of that to educate folks and provide consumer protection and information to them. With the item that Mayor and I come up here in a little bit, K1, we would just encourage a dialogue. We're here. You've obviously gotten our attention. Major providers are here. The finance providers are here, and we'd like to continue this discussion. I too would ask for a workshop where we can talk. Obviously, there's some questions about this. We're prepared to answer those and drill down, whether it's specific examples of consumer protection that you'd like to understand better, see bolstered, whatever the dialogue would be, we would encourage that discussion. That's why we're here. It's why I'm here today. So, appreciate your time and attention on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, Councilmembers. I did fill out my green sheet prior to, so I should be good to go. Matthew Choi, I'm with Renew Financial. I am the fourth and final pace provider here, so there won't be 12 more of us coming up behind me. So, get excited about that. But what I wanted to do, and not to be redundant, is I wanted to thank Senator John Martin. I wanted to thank Representative Dana Trabowski, and I most wanted to thank Governor DeSantis for signing SB 770. And I wanted to thank organizations like the Florida Association of Counties and the League of Cities to get behind that program. Because what pace was originally meant to do was simply help homeowners be able to upgrade and fortify their homes through a financing mechanism that might not otherwise be available to them. The, the truth is, is that most of us don't have the $20,000, $30,000 sitting in the bank. But what we do have is equity in our homes, and that was ideally what the program was supposed to do. That's how we have things like lower interest rates, so that it's actually cheaper to the homeowner to be provided the assessments through us than, let's say, through an unsecured line of credit. And so, what we did through 770 and through our sponsors was we made sure to put guardrails on the existing program, which I'm sure you guys have all heard about, and that's why it's, you know, up here, because there is a lot of misinformation and outdated information as it relates to the pace program since 770 was signed by the governor. So, what we would love to do is have an opportunity to discuss that with each of you, and perhaps even educate you and your staff on the changes that have been made, because they are detailed, they are significant, and they are widespread throughout the pace program. And so, it is not at all unexpected that we might see something like K1 come up because we do have those inaccurate articles being written in the papers. However, what we want to do is provide you the facts, the figures, and the truth about what pace does and how it can help your constituents. Again, my name's Matthew Choi. I'm with Renew Financial. Happy to answer any questions. But we would like to open a dialogue and perhaps even move this particular agenda item to postpone it so we can have a more robust discussion.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair.
Anyone else wishing to address the board? Welcome, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Don Taylor. I haven't turned in my green sheet yet, but I will. And I am representing the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce today. Josh Wooton is the CEO. He couldn't be here today. He's in Tallahassee taking care of some business up there with the state chamber. So, he asked me to fill in for him today. And I will say that all of my comments, I've already passed by Josh, so I'm not going to commit the chamber to something that he hasn't agreed to. I would never hear the end of that. Reference agenda item E13, local government infrastructure surtax, and more specifically, the local option sales tax. The chamber sees the advantage of a local option sales tax to provide additional revenue for current and future needed projects in Citrus County. And as you know, Citrus is only one of two counties out of the 67 that does not have a local option sales tax right now. So, we're somewhat behind the curve on that. I've heard estimates anywhere from $24 to $28 million of potential income for this sales tax. And it was mentioned by Commissioner Bayes that about 26 or 27% would be paid for outsiders coming into our county, like tourists, that would help with that. And actually, the chamber would be willing to work with the county staff to develop a community engagement plan for the potential local option sales tax. And Commissioner Cannard, you mentioned about how it, my words, grassroots effort to do that. And we would receive input from all county residents of the potential for the 1% local option sales tax, and how the additional revenue should be used going forward. And as I say, we would be willing to work with the county on that, the chamber, and to put that plan together, and of course, bring it back for your, your agreement and consideration. And Mr. Toy will speak to that on some of his presentation when he comes up to present E13. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Any other speakers? Would you like to address the public? Going once, going twice. Okay, moving right along. We should be on E1.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion and accept E1, A, B, and C.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Barrick, second by Commissioner Davis.
May I have her put her speaker on, please?
Oh, could you put her speakers on?
My speaker's on.
Do you want me to finish this one?
Yes, go ahead.
Any board discussion? Any public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
On to E2.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E2.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Barrick. Is there any public comment? Is there any board comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. E3 budget resolutions.
Motion to approve E3.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. E4, Christopher River Airport.
Motion to approve E4, A, B, and C.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis.
Second.
And I have a second by Commissioner Barrick. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. E5.
Motion to approve E5, A and B.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Barrick. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. E6.
Motion to approve E6, A and B.
I have a, a motion by Commissioner Davis.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm going to take a break after this one. Motion to approve E7, A, B, C, D, E, and F.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Barrick. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor-
Wait, I gotta, I wanna comment. I, I had to make a comment.
Oh, okay, make a comment. Be quick about it, though.
For those people in the audience, the TDC money is not your taxes. It is money that's collected from visitors who come. And the money that is being expended here is money to bring more visitors. So, it's not costing you, a citizen or taxpayer of Citrus County. That's why I am in favor on things like this, because it isn't costing us anything out of my ta, out of my pocket.
Any other comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. E8.
Motion to deny E8.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan to deny, a second by Commissioner Barrick. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. E9, assignment of developers' utility prepaid credits.
Motion to approve E9.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan.
Oh, thank you, A and B.
A second by Commissioner Barrick. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. E10.
Motion to approve E10.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Davis. Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E-
That was pulled.
Oh, E11 was pulled, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. E12.
Motion to approve E12.
A, B, and C.
A, B, and C. Full thing.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E13.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis.
Second.
And I have a second by Commissioner Barrick. Is there any public comment? James, would you please come forward and just?
I was questioning about the motion, because it's provide consensus, this was.
I was questioning about the motion, because it's provide consensus.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I thought you were this close to skipping over me.
No, you're not getting away that easy.
I know, I never do. So you might recall that back in January, this board received a presentation from Ms. Heather Espinoza of Neighbors, Giblin, and Nickerson. That presentation was the second related to local option sales taxes available to Citrus County. Now, in the presentation, Ms. Espinoza alluded to the fact that there are four local option sales taxes that are applicable to Citrus County. However, one really fits the priorities that have been laid out by this board, and that is the local government infrastructure surtax. This is a surtax that can be levied up to a rate of 1%. It is estimated that it would generate $26.4 million annually for the county. Of course, as we continue to experience both residential and commercial growth, we imagine that figure will continue to rise, and it will be contributed to by both our residents and visitors. Our current estimates indicate that any surtax that this county were to implement, roughly 30% of that would be paid for by our visitors. The funds raised through the local government infrastructure surtax could be dedicated to a variety of different purposes. Chiefly amongst those is traditional road infrastructure. That's for both the construction and reconstruction. Commissioner Barrick, I'm going to look at you when I say this one. Road resurfacing is covered by this local option sales tax. I want to make sure you're aware of that one. But there's also other purposes outside of infrastructure, public safety expenditures related to equipment for fire and EMS services, public spaces such as green spaces, parks, conservation land acquisitions. Commissioner Cannard, I did not let Commissioner Barrick off the hook. I'm not going to let you either. We're looking at Pirate's Cove for something like this, as well as various other purposes. Now, in order to advance the conversation past what we've been in, which is the conceptual stage, staff is proposing that we move forward with adopting the local government infrastructure surtax via consensus. That is the one of the four that we would move forward with, and have staff come back in March and give an overview of the procedural process for taking this from where we're at now, which again is the conceptual stage, excuse me, and then putting it on the ballot in 2026.
Board members, you have any questions of Mr. Choi?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
Just to be clear, so you're looking at making a presentation to just all the steps to get from A to Z, but we're just framing it out right now? That's all we're doing?
That's exactly right. So again, according to the presentation we received from Ms. Heather Espinoza, there are four options currently available. Two of those are related to indigent care, and the other one is related to fire services. I do actually have questions about one of the four that she presented. According to Florida statutes, only counties with a population over 800,000 can qualify, which would take us down to three.
So the only thing we're voting on here is to get more information?
Exactly right. Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'm always good with more information.
All right. If there's no other questions, I think I already opened it up to the public, so board members, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Outstanding. Thank you, James. Appreciate your work on that.
Good late afternoon, Commissioners. I have your outstanding commission items list here. It has been updated, and we have six projects that do have a new status or an activity that's been completed. The first one would be the landfill expansion, Phase 4A. We are looking for the completion on that project, but unfortunately, we're just a little bit off track. There was a delay over the holiday season in some electronic components. Those have been received. My understanding is that the 10% completion that is left on this project is just punch list items, but we have extended the deadline slightly to be able to get that done. But we're looking forward to that being completed. Core civic staffing, I'll just mention for February 4th, the number that we have from our contract monitor is 64.45% staffing. Road resurfacing for fiscal year 2324. All paving in District 3 is complete. However, there is a completion of some punch list items for that district prior to actual close out of the district. Likewise, we are looking for the official kickoff of the other four districts. There have been some roads completed in District 1 as a result of other projects that the vendor has in that area, but officially, we are looking for a timeline for those other four districts from that vendor, which we anticipate getting by the end of this week. Based on conversations, we're looking at hoping to get all of those roads completed by mid-year, May-June, but until I get that from the vendor, I don't want to speak in their place. For this year's road resurfacing and preservation, paving is currently in progress in Inverness and Dunellen. About 14 roads have been completed so far, although that is only about 2% of the list of roads. It is still good progress, and we see that continuing. We're looking at a completion date for that piece of the contract for June. So we're hoping to have both fiscal years of road resurfacing wrapped up by mid-year of this year. Then we'll be back on track. Scott resurfacing on Duncan Field is slightly overdue for its completion date, but we are waiting for that updated vendor timeline, which should also give us some clarity on that. The only things awaiting on Duncan Field are final thermo striping and completion of some punch list items. So that's 96%, almost there. I don't have a formal update for Betts Farm. I just wanted to let you know that there has been no new PDC date. I inferred that there may be one set between last meeting and this one, but there has not been a new date set. And then we have the Crystal River Connector Trail. We're currently preparing a work authorization for the design services on that, and the next step would be to present that for approval. Does anyone have any questions about those projects or any of the other projects on the list?
I have.
Madam Chair, Barrick.
I know that sometimes you cannot figure out what roads to pave at what time. My question, and a lot of my constituents' questions are, currently we have 41, which is a north-south road. We have 491, which is a north-south road, 19, which is a north-south road, and now you started working on 491 from 486 back towards Beverly Hills. Do you understand what you have done to the drivers in this county?
I can let F.D.O. know, for sure.
Please, let them know, you know, they have made it almost impossible to get north to south in this county in a reasonable amount of time. And it doesn't take that much planning.
I will get with Mr. Eastman to see what we have control over in that process of those roads that you listed, and certainly, we can do our best to try and mitigate that.
Thank you, Veronica.
Absolutely.
Mr. Howard.
Yes, I'm always glad if I can go internal with applicants. So I'm seeking confirmation appointment of Carlton Hall as a Public Works Director. Also, Ken Cheek, which will remain as the Water Resources Director, but I'm going to tap him as a county engineer. And also, we had a new addition a few months back, Corey Dillmore, will become the Assistant County Engineer effective today, if this board approves this. So recommend approval, please.
I'm happy to make that motion. But, you know, Ken Cheek and Carlton Hall have been here a very long time, so can they come forward?
Absolutely.
I just want to publicly acknowledge both of you for your tenure here in the county. It's very rare that we have people of your caliber and quality that work so diligently for so long, and your commitment to our community. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge you and thank you for your time here in Citrus County and the great work that you do.
Thank you.
We're two guys that normally like to be in the background, so thanks for that.
Is Corey in the audience?
Always trying to torture your cat.
If Corey can come forward. We're fixing to put a lot of work on Corey's. I want you to know who he is, if you haven't had a chance to meet him. But we're so glad. We actually took him from the city of Inverness, so Eric Williams has still upset me, I think, for that, but...
Well, you haven't been here that long, Corey, but we're glad to have you too.
Yeah, and these are both...
Glad to be here.
Buckle up, because we're about to make you really busy.
And Corey's a professional engineer, P.E., as well as Ken is. That's important, to have that expertise on the staff, and Carl's doing an amazing job with his team as well. Thank you. Congratulations, all three of you.
Yeah, and just want to fully disclose to everyone that I am a member of a small group of FSU holdouts in Citrus County. So just let you know.
We won't kick you to the curb for that.
They're with you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So I made the motion on that. If I could get a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bays and a second by Commissioner Barrick. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in...
Chair, that is A, B, and C, right?
Yes, A, B, and C. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Advisory Board nominations and appointments. Board members? I guess we recently, planning development mission, we need to select one alternate member and clarify the recent appointments. I would nominate on number B, I'm going to go for that one first. I would, Mr. Barmes, I would give him the 13127, since he's been on the board for a while, he may want to come off. And then the Stuart Bozeman and Jeanette Collins, the new expiration dates of 13129. And does anybody have anybody that they want to nominate for the alternate member?
I second.
That's on B. We need to do A. A, does anybody have a nomination for... Okay, I'll nominate Janice Murphy as the alternate member.
I'll second you.
All right, you have a motion by Commissioner Bays and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment? Did you have something you wanted to say?
There was room for it to be confusing, so I was just here to clarify.
I'm a little...
And I would love to hear the motion, if you don't mind.
The motion is for Janice Murphy as the alternate, and the clarification on the dates, Richard Barms to be, for the term expiring on the 27th, year 2027, and the other two in the year 2029, for Stuart Bozeman and Jeanette Collins.
So do 27 for Barms and 29 for Bozeman and Collins?
Yes, because Barms has been on the board for a while, and he may decide he wants to come off after that. If not, we can reappoint him, but the other two are new members, and I thought...
Give them four years?
Yep. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I-2, nominating .3 individuals to Beverly Hills Advisory Board as regular members to fill two-year positions that will expire January 31st, 2027.
Commissioner Bays, I'd like to make a nomination of Bonnie Larson Schaefer, Michael Belkin, and Richard Fontaine. That's because I have been attending the MSBU meetings, and I've seen them in action. I think they would continue to do a good job and do a good job.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Barrick and a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment? Yes, ma'am.
As she's coming forward, Chair, I just, I think that Commissioner Barrick said she nominated, but then Commissioner Davis said she seconded. So was that a motion that Commissioner Barrick made?
Yeah, it's a motion to nominate.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Sorry for butting in.
I know, we get these mixed up. It's a motion or a nomination. Pardon me?
Is it an appoint, not...
Yes, ma'am, please.
Hi, I just wanted to say, I'm Janice Smith. I was just recently appointed Chair of the Beverly Hills MSBU, and I'm in total agreement with Ms. Barrick. I'm so happy that she's been coming to our meetings. Losing a couple of members recently has been pretty hard, so these people come every month religiously, so I would really appreciate their nomination. So thank you so much.
Oh, we appreciate you being here. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Commissioner Davis.
The Medical Examiner Commission for the State of Florida denied Lake and Sumter their petition to leave the district. So it's going to be some fun rebonding at our next board meeting.
All right. Do you have anything further?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Cannard, since we had four finance people here on rescinding PACE, and there's new legislation, do you have any heartburn about having a workshop or having more information on this?
No, I'm ready to rescind it. I'm ready to direct staff to bring it back, and they'll get another bite at the apple. But I would like to see us... So there's nothing, at this point, all we're doing would be to direct staff to bring it back, to rescind that resolution. And I'll tell you why I think we need to do this. I was here in 18 when we got the, the board got the very slick sales presentation to allow this program in our county, and against the advice of, I don't recall if it was legal or probably legal, or some other folks that came up to speak during that time, that it was a dangerous road to go down. We had, we had comments by one of the lenders that, "We can assure you, we're not taking people's houses away in the state of Florida." I forget, I mean, this is, what, six years ago now, seven years ago, that only one person's house had been lost due to this program, and the person's inability, and the entire state, and all the counties that allowed this. And so it sounded like a great way for people to access capital to be able to make these improvements to their homes. Last year, I had a mother of three approach me and tell me that there were some issues with the PACE loan that was taken out on her house when she was, when she was married at the time. She had reached out to, and I don't understand the relationship between Renew Financial and Florida Green Finance Authority, but she had reached out to them, trying to get this issue resolved. This is going back to, she reached out to me last year, but the first, the first contact with them was back in May of '22. And so she got me the contact information. She had been unable to resolve the issue with them or get any further communications with them. I made several phone calls. I wish I had kept the name of the individual that I called at the time. The name I've got in my emails is a Rolando Breedwood of Renew Financial. I'm not sure if that's the one who never returned my calls. But I, too, made several attempts to reach out and try and find, try and help her find some resolution here, but I couldn't get anybody to contact me back. She's continued to pursue this, to try and get the issue resolved, and as of last month, she was, she was informed by the judge that indeed they were going to sell the deed to her house in April of this year. So she had, she had 60 days to get out of her house. I've since talked to her a couple times since then, and every time ends in tears. Here's a single mom of three, no place to go, but her house did get a $12,000 air conditioning unit installed, which seems excessively high to me, but I haven't bought an air conditioner in some time. But anyway, given her situation and the inability of this organization to get back with me, and then I asked, I asked for some records, some county records, on how popular or how common is this? And that's when I got the information that right now, as of April of this year, if the taxes remain unpaid, there are five deeds that will be sold on the courthouse steps. As of April of next year, if remain unpaid, there will be 11 that will be sold on the courthouse steps. And as of April 27th of, or April of '27, if they remain unpaid, there will be 98 deeds sold. If there, if there is one person in this county that loses their home as a result of this program, it's, it's a bad program. Now, maybe these changes that have been enacted... Now maybe these changes that have been enacted, maybe it's, maybe it's gonna clean up the program. Maybe it's gonna clean up the sales pitch, uh, the aggressiveness, uh, for which they go after these people's homes. But I would like to see this county step back from this program. Maybe we can reevaluate it in three years or four years, whatever it takes. But look, all the speakers came up here, they give a nice presentation, it's the same pitch we got in 18. And this has allowed, yes, these people agreed to these loans, I get it, I'm not, not contesting that. But it is, uh, it is a program that has allowed some of our residents to get in trouble and ultimately, uh, losing their homes over it. So I would make a motion that we direct staff, uh, staff to, uh, uh, to rescind, uh, that resolution and, uh, terminate, uh, this program in Citrus County.
Commissioner Canard has made a motion to rescind. Is there a second to that? Motion dies.
Alright.
I, um,
Lenders win.
I completely understand what you're saying. I have looked at this pretty thoroughly. Given the state of where our, no pun intended, the state of where our state is currently with housing issues and the cost of rent, um, there may be bad actors out there, but this new legislation appears to me that it has really, um, cleaned up some of this. It's much better than, uh, someone putting it on a credit card at 25% interest rate. The loan cannot exceed more than 20% of the just value of the property, and there, and the list goes on about what's happened with the consumer protections in the statute. The one thing that I would like to see is that, and, and I've been told that we can do this, um, the things that it applies for. One would be taking off, um, it does not, that it would not qualify, nobody could get a loan for, um, solar panels. And the reason being, and being in the insurance business, many times they come in, they wanna put these solar panels on the roofs. It causes leaking, they need a million-dollar liability policy to do it. Those solar panels have to be cleaned on a regular basis in order to get the best generation out of them, and the life cycle of them, from what my neighbor tells me, it's 20 years. I, I just disagree with the whole program on that. I, I don't see that there's enough of a benefit to the people, so I would remove those off, out of our county that, um, no one could get funding for solar panels. But as far as, um, we have many people that just can't afford, I mean, you have a house and it needs a new roof. Your insurance company says, we're gonna cancel your insurance if you don't put a new roof on. They don't have the money for a roof. And the next option then is for the mortgage company then to put forced-place coverage on it. Forced-place coverage only covers the amount of the mortgage. It does not cover any of the equity in they have in their home. So I, I look at it, and I think this gives people an opportunity to stay in their home, given the fact that rents are extremely high. There's very few rentals. Um, w- we are much better keeping people in their homes than trying to send them out into a rental market. So for that reason, um, I, I am convinced at this point, I have not, I haven't seen the evidence to make me want to rescind this, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Canard.
Yeah, well, I appreciate all that information. There are other options for them. They don't have to put it on a credit card. If they have equity in their home, uh, they can look to use that. If they can't afford it, they're not gonna be able to afford it in a year, and you're talking about keeping people in their house. This is exactly how they lose their house. There's a reason that only about 25 counties in the state of Florida allow this. It doesn't, it doesn't take but ten, and I, I get it, this isn't going anywhere, and I'm fine with it. I would never take this loan out. There's a reason they've got salespeople circulating through, uh, through neighborhoods, elderly neighborhoods, uh, other neighborhoods, lower-income neighborhoods. Because those are exactly the people they can prey on. These are the people, they can sell them the solar panels, they can sell them the new air conditioner, the high-efficiency stuff, uh, that is not gonna amount to a hill of beans until their tax bill comes. And then when they can't afford that, then it starts to stack up on them, and it's not long before they lose their home. This is, and again, I voted for it. I was a proponent for bringing this in because it seemed like a great idea. And, in retrospect, seeing that people are losing their homes over this, it's a bad deal. Maybe the new legislation, uh, cleans it up. Maybe it ends up being a better program. I hope that it does. Given this isn't going anywhere, let's, let's hope and pray the legislature's got it, uh, to protect homeowners, uh, rather than allow what's been happening here. As it stands right now, it's a bad program.
Commissioner Finnegan?
That must've been horrible for you to deal with that person, and I hope that we could connect that person. I don't know if there's some nonprofit services or something to help. And I see that you've seen the bad end of it. I don't know that we can find out, 'cause I know like five are up for tax deed. There's probably other people that are up for tax deed sales that have nothing to do with this program, and I feel bad for them too. We don't wanna think anyone is losing their homes. Could it have been some problems with this program? Yes, I'm glad to see it revamped. I think that, um, some problem could be unscrupulous contractors. There are, I know contractors that use this program, very, very last resort for their customers, and I'll give an example in a minute, but contractors like that aren't canvassing neighborhoods. They're not sucking people in or knocking at their door, scaring them. And I think solar panels, panels, I like what you're saying about that because that's not a necessity. A roof is, an air conditioning is. That's a good example of how it's used. It's an 85-year-old couple. And when we say, put it on the credit card, that's not an option. The credit is really bad. They're on only social security. They have all this equity in the house. Maybe it's paid for already. They have some money, but no credit. So what they'll do, last resort, no credit card, a, a good contractor will have financing partners. And all of those have failed because the credit's bad, but they pay their taxes. So what these companies are supposed to be doing is reviewing that and making sure with those finances that that payment, whatever that comes out over the 20 years, can be paid. And, you know, when you, because of insurance purposes, or you're hot, a roof, an AC, that's something that's, that 85-year-old needs and thinks, well, it's gonna get me through to the end of life, and then if it's not paid, the house sells, whatever, you know, it'll be taken care of. It can work, and the only reason I didn't back you up is just how Commissioner Baze said. It's keeping other people in their homes. I'm hoping we don't see a lot of problems with it. I think the people here today are seeing, and maybe you already know, there were some issues, so those people need to do better, but I think that, and I don't know how we do it as a board, but contractors need to be held accountable. I'm sure there's some, you know, good business nonprofits out there to help consumers. There's Crimes Against Senior that, that's helped. Um, I'm affiliated with some businesses that have actually reported other businesses to try to come in and clean up the mess because there are some unscrupulous people, but they don't care. They're just trying to get that money and throwing it to financing. But I'm hoping the financiers on the other end, we have to make sure that these people can make these payments.
Don't indulge me for just a moment. Um, Mr. Peterson, I wanna ask you a question. I think four of the finance companies. Are you the only four finance companies in Florida, or are there others?
For residential, that's correct, and we do have a representative here, and, um, again, when I reached out, that was our primary concern. It sounds like you might've been reaching out to one of the contractor managers. I can't, I don't know for sure, but you know, there are, there is a 1-800 number you can call. Renew Financial is a wonderful institution. They're, they're not receiving calls is something that, that, it's one, I mean, we get, uh, you know, a lot of complaints about contractors and different things, but not answering the phone is not one of the complaints. So we'll, we'll make sure we, we hook up and, and get you the information you need so that we can talk to the, the people that can actually ma, make a difference there.
Listen, I, I would appreciate, I'd love nothing better than to stay out of these things. This is not, this is not a, a hill I want to die on, for sure, and I won't. I'll give you the lady's name, she, and I'll stay completely out of it. All she wants to do is stay in her house. She sold her home up north, took all the money from that house, put it on down, down payment here, has all that equity in it. And there was a divorce in there somewhere, I believe. But ultimately, she stuck with this, and now, you know,
Let's see what we can do.
60 days, and she's out and loses everything.
Well, let's see what we can do about that. Our, our goal is to keep people in their homes, and, and I appreciate you, Commissioner Finnegan, bringing that up because forced-place insurance is more likely to lead to a default. Our, our statewide, uh, delinquency rate is .03%. It is very, very, less than half a percent, and that's verifiable. I'm happy to do all the stuff at a, at a workshop and help you understand, you know, we're not contractors, we don't go canvassing. Contractors go canvassing. We work with local contractors. And yes, sometimes the folks will come in from out of town and do that kinda stuff, and, you know, there are, you know, provisions you can put in place that commission to help curb some of that. Third-party marketers who are, who are, you know, spreading misinformation, just trying to get lead, lead generators. So there are ways, we'll, again, we'll be looking forward to working with you and, and, and try, if we wanna remove solar, let's remove solar. This is the home rule, make sure you have the right to do that.
So two things, I don't know, Madam Attorney or Mr. Howard. Can we get a workshop scheduled, um, for them to do a presentation on this? That's one, and number two, what do we need to do to be able to remove solar panels from qualifying?
I believe that once you allow the PACE program under the statute, you have to allow them to do-
No, you don't.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, home rule allows you, there, there are, um, certain counties which have, or cities that have said you're not allowed to do these certain improvements, and that's what home rule is, again, meant to, meant to do. I, i- if your county doesn't want something, we're not gonna be pushing on your folks. Let's, let's take those steps. And, uh, some have done on a resolution, some have done ordinance, some have done in the ILA. And again, Hillsborough just adopted, and they, and they did a similar thing. They, they didn't want residential solar. So that, so it's just in the ILA, it just says, you know, it's, solar is prohibited as a, as an eligible product, so.
What's an IOA?
ILA is an inter-local agreement, and that's a agreement that's signed between the districts, which is the-
So the four that we've already signed?
That's correct. You can, we can do an amendment, sure.
Okay.
Or an addendum, sure.
And we'd have to amend the resolution also?
I don't know about that. I think you just have to do the ILAs. I mean, again, if we all agree to it, right? I mean, this is, and you're, you're not gonna get pushback from us on this, if that's your, if that's a wish of the board.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Finnegan?
While they're working on that, to remove solar panels, which I agree with, maybe Mr. Peterson and our attorney can look at what you've seen work, and maybe what we know we can legally do to keep those third-party bad actors out. If we can protect our citizens from this poor lady that Commissioner Canard's been working with, um, that would be helpful to us, I think. So whatever ideas you have and can share with us, I'd be willing to listen.
Yes, yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, Commissioner Barrick?
Hi, this afternoon, I'm gonna ask you, the board members, for consensus to acquire two appraisals for the Riverview Clubhouse property located at 561 West Wisselakuchi Trail in Citrus Springs, Florida. The property is approximately 17.3 acres, and I would like it to, I would like us to purchase it for a park, a family park, and a retreat center, and a conference center, um, using impact park fees. In other words, the impacts for the parks has already been collected, so it wouldn't be costing us anything. The one thing that is gonna cost us, and I don't like to spend money, but the appraisals are gonna be between $2,000 and $4,000 each. And that's what I'm looking for us to move to the next step. I had given you pictures of where the property was last meeting. I don't know if you've had a chance to see them, or if you've had a chance to drive past where this is. It's flat, it's high and dry, it has a trail that goes down to a lake. And you can have kayaks on the lake. The lake empties into the Wisselakuchi River, which you just travel downstream, and you're at Don Ellen by the bridge. So it's a good piece of property for a brand-new family park and conference center for the county.
Commissioner Barrick, I, I love the idea, but what I would really like to know from staff is, even if you bought this piece of property, what would it cost for the renovations, um, to bring it up to date and make it usable? Number two, what, looking at all of our other parks, and we have these buildings. You have Citrus Springs, you have Beverly Hills, I don't know what other ones we have out there. What is the usage on those, and what kinda revenue do we generate out of them? Do they pay for themselves? I'd like kind of a financial forecast of our, looking at our parks. I feel like we've got all these parks, but they're inactive parks. I look at Holder Park, we've never expanded it. Um, we have one regulated ball field, which is by Centennial and Crystal River. I would love to see our parks, the ones that we have, built out, designed, before we pick more projects and not knowing how much, and where the money's going to come, you know, for the renovations and after buying it.
Madam Chair, this, this piece of property does come with a building, which can be rented out. But it also comes with office space, which can be rented out. And looking down the road, possibly the Civic Association for Citrus Springs could rent out the office space and monitor the building so we wouldn't have to have Parks and Rec staff. As for parks in Citrus Springs, Citrus Springs has one park on North Citrus Springs Boulevard, and it is used by a lot of people, but there's no quest to go there. So we can't tell you what the revenue is, you know, there's nothing that we put out for the park. The only thing that they, the, the basketball courts have been up, we haven't replaced those. The other year, about, about three years, four years back, they put up a light at night. I think about three or four years ago, you guys approved it? The board approved, I, it was probably prior to your getting on the board. Okay, but they did approve a night light, but it closes at dusk. The other park that Citrus Springs has on North Citrus Springs Boulevard is a tennis court. Okay, the building in Citrus Springs makes money. The West Citrus Springs, the one at 1570 West Citrus Springs-
How much money does it make?
I'd have to have somebody get me a price, but they have concerts there once a month that make money. They rent the building out for weddings, they rent it out for, uh, graduations.
And I, I understand what you're saying, I, but that's exactly my point. I would like to know what the revenue is, and then I would like to know what it costs to operate that.
The Parks Department would be the one that we would, could tell you what, what that is. I, I don't hold the purse strings for, you know, what we rented out for, 'cause that one is rented out. But if you turn around and you say, you know, other areas, um, the mu, the majority of people moving to Citrus County, and we were told that last week, are either moving to Citrus Springs or to Sugar Mill Woods. So if they're paying a Parks impact fee, it would be really nice if the board would use Parks impact, impact fee on a park in that area. And all I'm asking is, let's go out and get a bid, uh, uh, an estimate as to how much this property is worth. And, and I'm not saying we're gonna purchase it, I'm saying, just let us go out and see what it, you know, what it is worth. I'm sure that Pirates Cove, didn't we go out for bids on Pirates Cove?
We did.
Okay, so, so the thing is, Pirates Cove, how much is Pirates Cove gonna bring us?
I don't understand.
So, so, you know, when, when that gets brought back to the board, but we did allow an estimate, you know, to have, have, you know, people go out and say, well, this is how much it's worth. That's all I'm asking is to, to get you guys to, to say, yep, let's go see what this piece of property. It's not a little piece of property. It's 17.3 acres. It's not 2.3.
Why do we need two appraisals?
Madam Chair?
Oh, sorry.
There's, there's some regulations on it, but I don't know if, um, according to staff, that's what's required. It's a statute issue, but 'cause a dollar amount, which we, I think there's, if it's under 250, but, I mean, we think it's gonna be more than that probably, the costs. Yeah, so there's some requirements when you do it, otherwise you have to go back and do it again.
Actually, went out and looked at that park, because I thought, what are these pictures? And it's a very unique piece of property, I have to give it to you. I think that I would have to agree with the growth of Citrus County. It's like I'm agreeing with both of you. I'm gonna make you see this all together. It is exceptionally beautiful, even though it's not been taken care of. You can see the beauty in this park. And then somebody had said that, you know, back in the day, they had baby showers there, and I do see to make money because it's such a special place, and it sits up high over the lake, and once you would be in there in that area, I would say, not large weddings, um, small weddings would be there, baby showers would be there, birthday parties, more than other- Small weddings would be there, baby showers would be there, birthday parties, more than other places that people would want to rent, because it, it is actually very special. And it has a lot of property, a lot of parking that's already there. There are some existing trails and some recreation spaces that could be expanded. So if we were looking at a park, I didn't know what I was going to find when I went out there. And I was more than pleasantly surprised. I do have a question, because Commissioner, you had said use the park money. I don't know what this is going to come out as, but how much park money do we have for, for that park? I didn't look before this meeting, I apologize.
Erin would have to give us those numbers.
I don't see her.
She's left, but we can get those for you afterwards. But I've seen, I've seen them, but I don't want to say off the cuff.
You know, and I don't know, I guess that's for two bids. I don't know if, or, you know, we could get one assessment, and if it's in the ballpark, go get a second one. I don't know how that, you know, what we're allowed to do, if that helps, you know, relieve some of that cost upfront. But I'm going to have to support you on this, I am. It's different, special, and I think it'll make money.
Madam Chair, Davis.
Oh, and I'm sorry, just before I give up the floor. And I do like the idea of the civic club being there and taking care and monitoring it, because they rent from us already. I mean, that would be such a cost, so I appreciate you brought a plan today, I really do.
Commissioner Davis.
I'm having flashbacks, so I think it was January of '21, maybe February, but I think it was January. And I did a very, very long business plan, multi, multi, multi-pages. I did not rely on staff, I did it all myself. I, Rock Crusher Canyon was up for sale. And we lost a fantastic place for concerts, wonderful place for very large fundraisers of various community events. And I, I was so proud of myself as a brand-new commissioner coming in with this business plan. Still didn't get anywhere with the board. But, you know, that's really, I'm, I'm going to go, go with, I like the idea potentially, but it needs a business case. It needs a business case. And as far as getting an appraisal, is the property on the market? It already has a price tag, and you can also look at Zillow and Redfin and all that, just to get at least a general idea of what it would cost and build a business case around that. But you have to do the research, you Google, I called a whole bunch of amphitheaters in the southeast. What is, you know, what is the funding required to run that? You know, what else can you do with the property to generate income? It was, you know, go back in the records, it's there, in the backup, what I submitted. And that might be a good template for you to develop a case on this, because Rock Crusher was really special. I have not visited this property, but this also looks special. So I'm not raining on your parade, I just don't want to spend money until a business case has been made.
All I'm asking is, you give us, you know, let, let's go get an appraisal. Deltona is the corporation that owns it. They're willing to talk to us, and they're willing to negotiate price, because it was originally built as a Riverview Clubhouse for the residents of Citrus Springs, which means this is what it would revert back to. It would still be for the citizens, and it's Citrus Springs, and it is in your district, because it's, you know, it's on C-39. It's not in my district, it's in District Five. And it's only two miles from Commissioner Kennard's district. So the thing is, it's like located where we don't actually have anything, but it does have water access. It does have paved, you know, so you don't have to worry about paving the things.
And.
I'd love to have you go see it.
Madam Chair, the purchase price is the least important part of it. It's the ongoing cost and what it'll bring back to the county. That's why the business case is far more important than the purchase price, obviously within reason, to my mind.
I am. Commissioner Kennard.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Barrick, I'm not going to support this right now, it's not a no, but not at this, not at this point. The, you've mixed in there the purchase, potential purchase of the Pirates Cove property. That's a purchase that's been talked about for years, we've been pursuing this. We've never gotten quite this close to it, and it's still not a done deal, but we're working on it, we'll see where that goes. That is not seeking out property just somewhere in our district and buying it because it's for sale, because it's a beautiful. Because Citrus County has lots of beautiful pieces of property for sale. This is expanding an existing waterfront park, that's a little bit different. We have got a study underway with Metro Forecasting that's going to tell us about the growth in our community, where we're going to need additional infrastructure, where we're going to need all of these different things to handle the growth that's coming to our community. My suggestion would be, let's wait until we get that report, see where that's telling us. You know, we're going to do an impact fee study coming up very soon. That will tell us how many additional acres of park space that we should be looking at for the growth in the county. And then we develop an organized plan for, or challenge staff to say, all right, how many acres of park space do we want to acquire in each of the districts? Is this going to be new park space that decreases the maintenance of those additional acres, as opposed to five acres here, fifteen acres here, ten acres here? Or are we going to be expanding an existing park, which isn't quite as, quite as expensive to mobilize equipment to two or three different parks? So for me, it's not a no, just not right now. I, I think it's a little bit ahead of its time, let's see what Metro Forecasting has to say. Let's see what our impact fee study has to say. And then we can start coming, then we can have staff come up with a plan for expanding our park system.
Commissioner Barrick.
It's nice that, it's not a no, but it is a conditional, maybe one day down the road. However, the people in Citrus Springs, which is part of three Commissioners' districts, deserve something for the money. They have already paid their park impact fees, and it is sitting somewhere, collecting interest probably, or being used. This piece of property is a piece of property that is usable from almost day one, if you don't use the building. In other words, you can take and have a picnic there, you can go take a walk. It's a bird sanctuary, which is a, you know, we talk about keeping, you know, the county staying more like nature. We want nature, we want nature. And then we let our builders clear-cut the property to put houses up. This is a prime piece of property on water that is usable. Now granted, the building does have a few things that need to be fixed. But it's like any old, anything, if you buy a used house, you're going to go in and you're going to want to change things too. And what I'm proposing is, it is a structure that can be rented out, it's not a huge one. Okay, so it's not like the Citrus Springs one where you can have 600 people. It's a medium-sized one where you can have about 200 to 250 comfortably. Okay? And it is, if you take the time and go out there, you would see that this is a wonderful thing for the county. It's not just that I want it, or it's in my district, or whatever. We don't give our people parks. The Bicentennial Park, how many people use that? How much money do we make from that?
That's my question.
How much do we get from the pool? Or does the pool cost us money? Okay? Parks and Recreation are supposed to be parks and recreation, they are not enterprise projects. You will never find a county where Parks and Recreation makes money. It's there for people to enjoy. But if you don't want to go get an estimate, that's your choice, because I'm only one of five.
Mr. Howard, would it be possible to send staff out there and make an evaluation? Before we spend money on an appraisal, what I would like to know, does this building need a new air conditioner? Does it need a new roof? What's it going to take to make it compliant? How, like, what is it going to take in mowing? Does it need any kind of paving updates? How many staff are going to have to be assigned? Like, kind of operationally, what is it going to take to do this? Before we jump in and spend money on appraisals, then we can back, kind of back into that number on our, by ourselves to know what we would be willing to pay for, what we think it's a fair market value, but understand that. And then look, like, how many times do we rent out the Citrus Springs Community Center, the Beverly Hills, whatever other buildings we have in our community under this, to give us a gauge of what the usage is like?
We can do it.
And then once we have that, then we can bring it back and, and know if, I mean, we have to understand the finances of this before I think we can just spend money on an appraisal and not know what it's going to cost us.
We'll do it, we'll take care of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
Commissioner Finnegan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to direct you to the backup material. It's the septic-to-sewer projects cost to homeowner. It was part of it, it was the sheet that I made out with some research, and of course, many, many conversations with our Director Ken Cheek. And the reason why I'm bringing this to you, it starts with Cambridge Greens, of course, who I think has talked to all of us, I know since I was elected. And furthermore, the used projects are moving rapidly into Homasasa, so some have been done. Some are in the works, some are to be scheduled in the future. I talked to some of, some other people with the state, and they thought that our citizens were only paying about $5,000, and that was going to be community buy-in. But that's not accurate. The assessment fee alone could be $5,800. Now, sometimes that varies, it might be 58, it might be 53, it just depends on the property's hooking up and how it shakes out. But, but that's a, a starting number that they start at. Then beyond that, they have to connect to the county, and that specifically is the number, $2,833.94. Then you have to have a plumber come out to connect, and one of the widely-used plumbers, it's between $1,000 and $3,000, but, so I went with two. I mean, it could be anywhere, it could be more, it could be less, but that's a, it's a good number. The septic tank abandonment, $2,000, if there's something in the way, or there's problems, it's more. But the two I'm looking at, there's the plumbing permit. So when the plumber goes out to connect, we have a $54 fee, and it's an additional 25 in a flood zone. Then they need a permit to abandon the septic tank, but that's to the Department of Health. So, you know, we can't, as this board today, do anything about that. There's a utility deposit of $140, and then lot repairs, of course, could vary. I put $1,000. So we're looking at just shy of $14,000 to somebody when we bring this out here. Now, the very little I'm asking for today is only because this is what we could do now and start chipping away at this. But with the blessing of Mr. Howard, I have been working with Ken Cheek a lot on these things. So he gave me the full blessing on the $140, because these people are already hooked up to water. If they are hooked up to water, they don't need to make another deposit. And then the permits, I think if the county is coming through and forcing things on people, that this is the least we can do, is waive this small fee. Now honestly, I am working on the big stuff, but that doesn't all come from us. But I would like, as part of my motion, for you all to give clear direction. Commissioner Kennard, your, your last item that we had with these funders, I totally get where you're coming from. But the, the people that are affected from those funding, they chose that. They made a decision, whether it was a well-educated decision or not, or maybe somebody unscrupulous, or maybe it wasn't. We don't know, but it was a choice. The county is pushing this on people, and it's $14,000. And I just think that is so unfair, because certain people are paying this, but it benefits everybody in the, in the community, right? It protects our water, it's good for the aquifer, you know, I'm a big proponent of, after we get enough of these projects, we can reclaim the water, save from our aquifer. I can see the big picture, it's going to take us years to get there. But you know what? We, as a board, should be forward thinkers on this. Let's take care of these two fees today that we can. And I would like you all to give clear consensus, as a board, to Ken and his staff, that when we are going after projects, we want it fully paid, because we're complaining about maybe an $8,000 or $12,000 thing that's on someone's taxes, that they chose. Well, people can't afford this, so $8,000 could be put on their taxes at a 6% interest. So they're going to be paying way more. But even if they do that, they may have $5,000 left, or left over, that they have to pay within 365 days. And that breaks people. I think people have the misnomer of, oh, it's people on the water, or people in Cambridge Greens can afford it. That, that's a misconception. Everyone in Cambridge Greens cannot, you know, some are retirees on fixed incomes, they've had their homes for a very long time. And I know coming out to Homasasa, listen, the people on the water have complained when they didn't see this, like, before I was elected. Oh, it comes through here, it's going to be $5,000 or $6,000, that's ridiculous. They don't, they don't know the full scope, but I'm worried about all the other people. An old Homasasa, widows living in small cracker houses that may have just gotten flooded, or mobile homes. This is going to break them. We can do better, we cannot push a $14,000 cost on our homeowners. I have more information, I know you got some backup information put in at the end. Trust me when I tell you, you can highlight a bunch of information, but it doesn't make a point. This is completely within our purview to do. Of course, I would not have brought this to you without fully vetting it between our Water Resources Director and our attorney. I've had several conversations with our attorney to make sure that we word this right, that we're doing it right, that we have the blessing of our Water Resources Director, that it won't affect grants in the future. We're working together, I'm willing to take this to, all the way to a state level. We're doing it very, very carefully, so we don't trip anything up, but you know what? We got to do better. We have to do better. These projects are important, but we can't have a few bear the burden for everyone. So with that, I am going to make a motion to approve M1, A, B, and C.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Barrick. I have a question. I don't know what I did with my notes, you're going to have to forgive me. So I did talk about this yesterday, maybe Ken needs to come back up. I know septic tank abandonment, that varies, I think he told me generally, on average, is somewhere between 500 and 1,000, maybe? It's, I mean, the 2,000 is pretty.
Yeah, we don't, that's not work that we do.
Right.
We have seen, I have looked at the numbers based on reimbursements that they've, we've done with people in other areas. It can be very wide-ranging, depending on who they hire. And in the term, in terms of the plumbing, it can be a wide-range too, depending on what they have in their yard, how far the house is from the road. So it's hard to give like an overarching number, and Commissioner Finnegan, we had that same conversation. I think a rounded number, those numbers that are on that sheet are fairly, you know, accurate, but.
May I, may I, Madam Chair, about that number?
One second.
Well, because we worked on specifically that number, and you told me who was doing most of them at that Chris River project. And I called that company, and it is the flat, it is $2,050, she told me. The $50 I pulled out, because that is them doing the permit. But 90%, I was told, they're all $2,050 with that permit including. I put between 1 and 3, because I think we had discussed that before, but I knew there was a recent project. Yeah, it, how long ago was the $500 one? You know, just like we were talking about, Commissioner Kennard said he hadn't found an air conditioner in a long time, and I think I was talking to, I think the attorney about it, we were, yeah, a few years ago, that things were relatively cheap. It is crazy how much things have went up, because the cost of supplies, the cost of staff, the gas, everything. So I think, I think this is a pretty reasonable cost.
I think a lot of times when we see the reimbursements, we don't see the breakdown. They, a plumber will hire us. A plumber will hire a septic tank guy as a sub, and they do the whole job, so we may not know what the breakout was just for the septic tank abandonment.
And then, what did you tell me about, there's something on the permit fee, because that's the enterprise fund, correct? I think she's, you're asking for the permit fee to be waived, right?
The permit fee, and Ken would be the utility deposit when they're already hooked up to the water.
Well, the utility deposit, when we talked about, somebody talked to me, was it you Denise, about the permit fee, going to the enterprise zone, and I mean, we're asking for that report right now to do that, and I guess there's...
Are you talking about at your briefing?
Yes.
So I think maybe Mr. Landon and I both talked to you, I can't remember, because we have all the briefings on one day, I can't remember who talked about what. But yes, the building department fees is the $79 potentially, which is the 54 and 25 if you're in a flood zone. And yes, that is taken out of the, it would come out of the enterprise fund, which is the building department. And we are asking for an audit of the building department, you approved that several meetings ago.
So how does that, how can, how can we waive that if it's an enterprise fund?
I don't think the enterprise fund is the issue. The Commissioner has asked that you vote on this today, and then we bring back the resolution and the fee schedule. So we would be revising the fee schedule and putting the category of septic-to-sewer, grant-funded, plumbing permit, something along those lines, would be a separate category in the fee schedule, and we'd bring that back for y'all to vote on that. We would need direction today on what you believed was the reasonable amount for that permit to be.
I can't find it, there was, I received something from the Builders Association about the, about this. So I'm, there's an issue around it, I can't, but I don't know where it's at.
Gaston Hall contacted me, I had a conversation with him. He sent a couple emails, and he sent you some backup material, so it might be on blue that you're looking for.
Probably.
And his issue is, I mean, I don't want to misstate what he's saying, but it's... I think Commissioner Finnegan referred to it when she talked about the highlighting. There's a bunch of highlighting on his...
I think he's trying to say we can't do it, and we absolutely can do it. And it wouldn't be a waive necessarily, we would put it at $0, that would be the fee amount. And it was my idea to add the grant-funded, because I was being very careful that developers couldn't go in and take out a bunch of septic tanks, and then everything be waived for them to put in infrastructure. So this is only for these grant-funded projects that the county is pushing on people. And when I say pushing, I don't mean that, like, it's not good for everybody. I just mean that they shouldn't have to pay $14,000 when I think everyone else there thinks, oh, it's going to be $5,000 or $6,000. And that's just not accurate. And I'm going to keep chipping away at it until when Mr. Cheek goes into a neighborhood and says, we've got money for septic-to-sewer, that all the calls he gets is that they're fighting for it. That's where we should be, they all want it. It's such a battle now, and can you blame them? Can you blame them coming in like this?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Kennard.
I'm not going to support the motion, just because it includes the permit fees right now. I'm fine with not collecting a deposit, they're already a current utility customer. But when we drop a permit fee to zero, that permit fee still has to be covered. Those expenses have to be covered. So it's just a redistribution of those expenses to other people. The expenses related to those things don't just go away. We've just said, okay, you're not going to pay for the permit fee, and you spread the rest of that over the rest of them, everybody else's expenses. As far as the connection fees go, I would love to see us find a way, I love that you're championing this, to try and find a way to lower the cost to connect to these things. But when it comes down to it, each customer that connects to that system is creating just a little bit need, a little bit of need for increased capacity at either the current facility or the new facility that will be built 20 years from now, that type of thing. And so that connection fee helps to cover that little bit of need that each house is creating. Ultimately, that money will be in the enterprise fund for them to go out and build that new facility or expand the new facility. If we can find a way to do that without these connection fees, I'm 100% on board.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Finnegan.
Just with respect to what you said about the permits, you know, and it is a small amount. I don't think our building department's going to go belly-up, because nobody questioned, we waived all the building fees for flood victims, and rightly we should. You know, we're helping our neighbors, as we would just be saying, we're helping you, because you all are paying everything, right? So dispersing that, that's my whole point of this whole thing. It's not fair for a small group of people to be serving, paying this money for the benefit of many, many more. I guess I want to see where the board is, because I want this to pass like it is. But if I have to pick some out, most importantly, where the biggest money is, I want your unanimous blessing, I hope, that we give clear direction to staff when we're putting these projects out, that we are looking for the whole number for the project. That means that assessment fee goes away, that is a big, big number. And then, there's separate grants that we had talked about that can help with some of those other fees. Cambridge Green got $4,000 per property owner, so we could do better. So I'm glad that you would at least support that, the other ones, Commissioner Kennard, I thank you for that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
I was actually going to ask why C was on there, because my understanding is that staff have been doing a really good job with that, and they try very, very hard to reduce, it benefits them to reduce the pain as much as possible, because they get yelled at a little bit less. I am fully on board with B. I am a no right now on A, but not necessarily a no long-term. I would like to see what the study comes back with. I mean, I'm fine with C, just because it, I think this is just reaffirming what we already do. But A, I would really like to see that study come back, and then we can have that discussion again on reducing that fee, perhaps, because I do agree, it's kind of, it's just an added insult to put something on someone and then say, now you got to pull a permit for it, too. But I want to, I'm concerned about doing, you know, setting a precedent here. And so I'd like to look at the whole landscape of permitting fees before I would be fully in support of that.
So you are also good with A and C?
No, I'm totally fine with B.
With B?
And C, I think we're already doing, and so I'm fine with that.
See, actually, Mr. Cheek wanted that direction himself, because I think past administrations, he did not get that clear picture. And other politicians, not us, I think, had felt, had pushed that $5,800. And I don't want that $5,800, and it seems like we would be in agreement with that, so...
You understand, the former colleagues that I sat up here with, at least one of them absolutely flamed me for capping it at $6,000, because it was going to be higher than that.
Well, thank you for at least capping it, but now you're with different people. We can, we can give them better direction.
Yeah, there are entities now that are, excuse me, requesting 100%. And in the past, one of the criteria that they judge those springs applications on is if you have matching funds. And I believe the caps that were set artificially here at the county were based on meeting a certain match requirement. They do rate projects under that category, but I have seen a lot more applications, because I sit on that Management Committee Board, where I think everybody has gotten to the point where the assessment projects and the way to fund them have become sort of a stumbling block, and maybe the low-hanging fruit's been taken up. So everybody sees the same problem. So we are seeing applications in this particular cycle, where people are asking for 100%, including connection fees and plumbing costs, all in the one application. So, you know, I had that conversation, like I said, with Commissioner Finnegan. I said, if they're doing it, we ought to be doing it. So the next applications we're going to do, that's what we're going to base it on. I've already had that conversation with my staff, we're putting the numbers together for the next go-round. Now, the products that we have coming in home SASSA, those were already funded. And they were based on an assessment being available as a matching fund, as the criteria for those projects. So I don't know how we're going to get rid of that on those. But going forward, I think every new application, we're going to go under that direction. And she's right, I did ask for that. Sorry, I don't know.
No, that was great, and we have been working together. And we worked, and I helped lobby that extra $1.3 million that's going to be coming in, just to try to take a bite, but it's still not enough, you know? And I'm going to, every time there's a pot of money for these projects, I will work with you, which you already know that, and keep lobbying, and if I find pots, like that one pot that I found, we're going to keep working on it.
All 3 of those phases, we're still waiting on the response from the Indian Nation on our Phase 5 project, but we'll get there.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
Commissioner Finnegan, just a request, certainly, it's your motion to do with it as you like, but if you could amend your motion to Part M1A just being the deposits, let's leave the permit fee where it is for now, and then B and C, that's something that I could support. If they're an existing utility customer, no reason to connect, collect an additional deposit, and then I would support B and C.
May I ask you a question about that before I amend it? So B is to bring back the resolution amending. Is that something we can have them take a look at for just grant-funded projects, to put that at zero when that happens?
Let's take a look at it, we'll have that conversation then.
Just nods, or we can take a look at it?
I just realized, my eyes are crossing after all this, I completely misread this, so...
That's why I asked you.
Yeah, now, yeah, it's, we've been up here, what, 4 hours and 38 minutes? I really don't think that's accurate, I think we've been up here 10 hours, anyway.
Well, since 9 this morning.
Well, that's true, we were here at 9 this morning. So I'm totally fine with waiving the deposits. I really want to push any reduction in permit fees until the audit is done. And then C is, let me read this to make sure, C I'm good with, that's what Mr. Cheek wants.
Are you ready, Amy?
So you're rescinding your first?
I'm just going to amend my motion to take out, to the part where it says reduce the permit fees on A, but keeping waiving the additional customer deposit and so forth. B, we're going to keep, and with direction to staff, to take a look at making the fees, as I proposed, zero for those only grant-funded septic-to-sewer projects. Just take a look at it. And C, give clear direction to staff, that, as it says here.
Can you second that?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Madam, do you have that?
Okay. So the A was to remove, reducing permit fees, did you add to C?
I didn't.
Okay, I thought you were just reiterating what you said.
B, I just added, because it says, consistent with our discussion, and our discussion is to have staff take a look at that, to put those permit fees at zero.
Okay. And Janet, Eric as well?
Oh, Claire, Claire's med. Okay. Is there any public comment? Thank you.
He's waited a long time.
Hello, I think you all know me, my name's Carl Palera. I'm from Citrus Hills, Cambridge Greens or Citrus Hills. I've listened to this go back and forth. You got a building permit fee which could be waived, you got a right-of-way permit fee, wastewater deposit of $120, you're going to watch the water come through my sewer, inspection fee of $100, utility activity fee of 35, Florida Health Department of Abandonment, $50. I've given all of you a lot of papers explaining everything what's gone down through over the last 4 years. There was a lot of money what came into this county, 20, over $29 million in the American Rescue Plan, which was for water and aquifers. We set on an aquifer which saves all the springs out there. It's a combined effort of everybody here. We got no monies from that $29 million, why not? We're infrastructure, we set on the aquifer. I have asked you people to subsidize the county, the $4,000 we're getting from the state to the $1.6 million, that takes care of all the residents in our area, which comes down to another $4,000 per house. It's not saying they're going to spend 8 grand. Other counties have done this, Leon County and 2 districts up there. In fact, go to our sister county right now. Go onto their website, and they've got questions, most asked questions. They got a sewer district going through, wiki-wachi right now. I called there, and I, to find out, they're bringing it in. Their citizens basically estimated right now, total cost, $5,600. And I have talked to Mr. Cheeks, great guy. I think he's done a very, very good job with what he's got to work with. And he is going to improve on this, but that would leave my people behind, and that's what I don't want to see. I think we would do some monies out of that $29 million what came in, and should be reconsidered, or find it someplace else. We had a nice deal, we couldn't do it the way the grant was written, where we could, my people can take the $6,000 over 10 years. The $2,800, it was $2,745, I told you, maybe it's 2,008 now. We had worked a deal with Ken where we could do that through the utility department for over 10 years, to have it paid off on the water bills. Can't do that now, because it's the way the grant's written. He's kind of asked up there if it could be done, it can't be done. We would lose that $4,000 grant money. So these people cannot finance that over 10 years. I know I'm out of time, I'll shut up.
Thank you.
But if you want more papers, I've got some more for you. I'm sorry, we didn't have our meeting.
All right, is there anyone else wishing to address the board? Seeing none, I'm going to close, open to the public.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I believe, in my research on PACE, I believe PACE can do financing for septic-to-sewer costs that cannot be normally rolled in.
I think they can.
It's worth looking into.
All right, if there's no further board comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, board, I appreciate you working with me on that.
Commissioner Lynn.
Attorney Lynn.
Please, no, I wouldn't want to sit in y'all's seats for any amount of money. I have nothing. Oh, no, I do.
Yes, you do.
Yes, I do, I do. The council is requesting an opportunity to have a shade meeting regarding the Swift-Mudd case following our last shade meeting and the discussions between the parties.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard and a second by Commissioner Davis, is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. All right, last open to the public, if you got it, bring it on, because we got a 501 that we're 44 minutes late for. All right.
Q1?
Pardon me?
Q1?
Yes, ma'am. Cheryl? Cheryl.
Advisory Board Announcement. Announce vacancies. Citrus County Veterans Services Advisory Board announced the terms of three positions and taking of applications. The terms will be for two years, which will begin on April 1st, 2025, and will end on March 31st, 2027.
Thank you. Does anybody want a five-minute break or you wanna roll right into the public?
Roll on.
All right.
Taking a break.
All right, you take a break. We're gonna get started without you.
Can the clerk get a vote on that?
You don't have any relief?
No, they're all gone.
Do you need to go? You want five, all right. We're gonna take a five-minute break for the clerk.
Thank you.
Thanks for speaking up. Seriously.
Just turn this on. If you've got the red light on, you're. We have a public hearing. It is 5:52. And we are going to hear PUD 2790, James Hartley Esquire for Jump Station Sales LLC.
Just one second, please, I'm sorry. At the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending the Citrus County Land Use Atlas map by adopting a new planned unit development for RV and/or boat parking facilities in the general, commercial, and heavy industrial land use districts, providing for applicability, providing for separability, providing for inclusion, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. And I do need to ask if you've had any ex parte communications. And we'll start at the end with Commissioner Davis.
No, ma'am.
No, no.
No, ma'am.
No.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I believe Mr. Hartley is here for the applicant.
James Hartley from Gooding and Batzel on behalf of the applicant, Jump Station Sales LLC. The address is 1531 Southeast 36th Avenue, Ocala, Florida. As you'll see today, and if you wanted to turn to page 1,376 of your packet, I have the concept plan or our proposed concept plan there. We're proposing a PUD for boat and RV parking. It's on US 19 and home of SASSA. We're proposing 60 spots initially. There will be 20 covered spots and then two other 20-spot bays that will be uncovered. There's gonna be a small office there that will be open during regular business hours. And, but we're gonna have 24-hour automation so that customers can come and go as they please at any time of day. Looking to the characteristics of the property, it's a little over two-acre parcel, a little bit oddly shaped, a little bit triangular. The current land use zoning and the current land use and the zoning are both mostly general commercial. There is a small sliver of heavy industrial there as well. It's surrounded by other general, commercial, and heavy industrial properties. To the west, there's a concrete batch plant. South, there's a vacant 14-acre commercial parcel. To the east, on the other side of US 19, there's various retail spots. And to the north, conveniently, there is a boat sales business. So, I do believe this is a great location. It's right on US 19. It's convenient to other boating and camping destinations that you would use your boat and your RV for. You have the boat store right next door. And then it's surrounded by the commercial and the industrial businesses. So, we don't have to worry about bothering the neighbors with the type of use that we're gonna be doing there. So, we would ask you to approve this PUD. At the PDC hearing, they also, they did recommend approval. But they did have a condition that we provide cross-access and stubouts to support that cross-access. We have requested a deviation from the requirement of cross-access. We'd like you to consider that as well. Part of the reasoning there is boat and RV storage is allowed in GNC, but only by approval of a PUD. Per your code, it says that it is intended that the regulations and requirements applying to a PUD shall be sufficiently flexible as to encourage creative and imaginative design and planning and development. So, here we do have a relatively small two-acre parcel, oddly shaped. A good portion of this property is gonna have to be used for DRA as well as a compensation area. You're gonna hear from our engineer very briefly. I know you've been here for a long time. He'll talk a little bit about how the characteristics here were a little bit different. The nature of a boat and RV storage is that this facility needs to be secure. It's of utmost importance that we make sure that the assets that the customers are entrusting us with are safe. We keep them, the bad actors away. We keep the bad drivers away. It's gonna be very well-lit. We're gonna have 24-hour security cameras there to make sure that all of those assets are protected. I think this is consistent with the intent of cross-access as well. Cross-access is, it's great when it's needed. And it's needed for developments where you have a restaurant and a gas station next to each other. You don't want to have to get back onto the main arterial road there just to get to one of those very similar locations. But here we have a somewhat semi-private business. You're not just going to be going there to pick something up real quick. It's used very infrequently. And like I said, it's very important for us to keep that secure and not have other cars or people driving or walking through there. Also in the code, it talks, when it's referring to the cross-access requirement, it talks about how our natural features cause the requirement of cross-access to be physically infeasible. Alternate design may be approved. I would submit to you that our alternate design here would be to waive the requirement for cross-access and allow us to put a fence around the entire perimeter there, again, for the safety of the assets that'll be there. I would like to invite Ken Ward up to the stand. He is the engineer here, just to provide a little bit more background. You could hear it from me, but it's better from him because he knows a little bit more about these items. So, Ken Ward.
Yes, my name is Kenneth Ward from Varell Engineering, 12005 North Florida Avenue in Dunellen, Florida. I worked on the Jump Court project. And we've already actually gone through, and we've already gotten the Swift mud permit. One of the issues of this particular site is it's a very small site. It's only two, just over two acres. And the actual impervious area that we are presenting is only 48%. And the reason for that is it had very high seasonal, high waters in this area. We had borings out on site and in certain locations, it was even six inches below ground. So, that limits, of course, of what kind of dry retention we can have. Makes the ponds a lot shallower, makes them a lot larger. We're running a 25-year storm on this. It's open basin and we're overflowing now. Typically, when we're looking at a site that's gonna be on the west side of US 19, we don't have to do the floodplain compensation because they consider it as an open connection over to the Gulf of Mexico. And this site, Swift mud would not go with that. So, we had to include the compensation area on-site. So, for every cup of water or fill that we brought into site, we had to compensate that for an area. As you can see from the exhibit, the compensation area is nearly as big as the DRA itself.
Excuse me, you say the exhibit. What exhibit are you looking at? Because that's not something that I'm looking at on the screen above me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The site plan is on page 1, 1376 of the packet.
I should've brought my personal one. The county gave me an iPad and it is frustrating. Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, I remember looking at this.
So, as you can see on the west side of the site, the entire west side is included in a compensation area. And that is for the floodplain compensation. We're bringing fill into the floodplain. The entire site is in the flood zone. So, that requirement, of course, that gave us a large area that we had to dig out and keep as green space, but it couldn't be counted towards drainage. The drainage is actually on three sides of this property. And basically, we took about every inch of this site in order to make sure that we could address the drainage. The impervious area, as I said, is only 48% on it. So, the idea of adding cross-access easement in here, the only, I mean, I don't really see that being feasible while this compensation is required.
Commissioner Finnegan.
Yeah, because when I looked at this and I was talking to staff in my briefing, I noticed where the road was. And I thought, well, I can see, you don't wanna push that all the way through for cross-access. But I wondered why wasn't it maybe at the top edge of the property closer to 19 or at the very back, which closer, I guess with the turn, that may not be allowed. And then at the back, are you saying that, and I'm familiar with that land, it's very wet, very wet. Are you saying you couldn't move it up because of how you have to, because of flow? Like, I don't.
Well, this whole, like I said, this whole area, you can see the compensation area is hatched and everything. But there's actually a DRA on three sides of the property. So, the whole area, other than the impervious area, is being treated for drainage and for compensation.
Oh, I see. Yeah, 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 I see.
Yeah, there's not really a shifting to get green space. There isn't anything else on here.
Thank you for pointing that out. Right, because I was looking at this, but you have a DRA here and here.
Right. And then they're all interconnected to make the DRA as large as we could. And we had to run that, of course, several iterations to get that to work, so.
No, only because I'm familiar with that piece of property. Like, I understand because it is so wet.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Before you leave, just for the record, could you just provide the board with your credentials and licensing?
Yes, I'm a Florida engineer, 88607 engineer's number with Florida Board of Professional Engineers.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right, so, like we said, I think boat and RV storage here, it's appropriate. I don't think you can get a much better location. For those reasons, I do request that you grant the deviation from the cross-access requirement. My client would also, if you're not comfortable with just a blanket deviation, if you could allow the deviation for as long as the property is used as a boat and RV storage, we would also be happy with that. Because I understand cross-access is important if it were for a different type of use. But for this type of use, it really is important for us to make sure everything is safe.
Thank you. Board, you have anything else? All right, staff.
Kelly Godell, Planner. This application, PUD 2790, is a request to allow for RV and boat parking in GNC with a small portion of the property zoned industrial. The property is approximately 2.3 acres. It's currently vacant and with sparse trees. The aerial photo shows the boat sails to the north. To the west is a concrete batch plant and an industrial park. And to the east, we have some commercial uses, restaurants, offices. And this shows our zoning and land use. You can see the little sliver of space right here that is industrial and then the industrial park behind it. The applicant's proposed buffers exceed our minimum requirements. They're proposing a 25-foot type C along south sun coast, 15-foot on the west and north, and 10-foot type A abutting the vacant GNC on the south. They are requesting a deviation from the cross-access requirement, and staff does not support this deviation. The subject property is surrounded by non-residential, commercial, and industrial uses, and it appears to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. That's all I have.
Board, do you have any questions for staff? All right. Is there any public, what's that? Public input, correct? Is there any public input on this application? Seeing none. I'm prepared to make a motion. I make a motion that we approve PUD 2790, James Hartley Esquire. I make a motion that we approve PUD 2790, James Hartley Esquire for Jump Station Sales LLC with the suggested conditions with everything but eliminating the cross-access.
Let me clarify, I think I'm going to second you. So you're saying all of our things that the county has said, but we don't need them to have the cross-access?
No.
Okay, I'll second that.
But that lives on for perpetuity, though. He was saying that we could say that as long as it's used.
No, I don't want any cross-access, and I'm gonna tell you exactly why. I think cross-access is the biggest problem that our county has. I am, if it's left up to me, I want this board to change it. I don't like it. I think it's wrong. I think there's places that it fits. But when we put cross-access onto somebody else's property, you're making that available for somebody else to drive across your property that you pay taxes on, you support your parking lot, and people can come in, park, and you have the liability of it. It is wrong. It is absolutely 100% wrong. I don't like it. I will, every time, approve not having cross-access on somebody else's property.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Tell us what you really think. Don't hold back now.
I think it's ridiculous.
Well, you have my second, ma'am.
So we have a motion on the floor by Baze and a second by Finnegan. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Congratulations. It is 607. We are adjourned.